Testing. One, two, three, four, five. Testing.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. This is the meeting of the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee. I'm Councilmember Dustin Hill, the Chair of the Committee. Been joined by my colleagues to my right, Councilmember Andrea Boone, and to my left, Councilmember Mary Norwood. We are not going to move on anything right yet because we do not have a quorum, but we are going to go ahead and start public comment. Speakers will have three minutes each. We have a list. All right. Two speakers. First up is Henri Jordan.
Given unto the Spirit of God, everyone that is here. Deliver me from my enemies. Oh, my God, defend me from them that rise up against me. Psalms 59, Chapter 1, verse. The Psalmist David's Prayer while some threatened by his enemies. James Griffin proven to be my enemy. Like Jesus said, that James is against his righteous word. James gave himself pay and glory for what Christ has done in me, created for the saving of an enormous amount of souls and lives. Give her the fruit of her hands, and let her own works praise you in the gates. Proverbs 31:31. She's a woman of God who is enterprising and decided and dedicated to her home. James sought to strengthen my weakness and not be on my strength, and worked against men becoming Christ-like husbands. The thief coming not but for to steal and to kill and to destroy. I am come that they might have life and that they might have it more abundantly. St. John 10:10. Good Shepherd, when Jesus uses his this terminology, thoughtful Jews remember Psalms 23. The Lord is my shepherd, and even understand Jesus claimed to be God. I need Jesus' help. What about you? Sought men to love their wives at their own bodies. He that lovers his wife lovers himself. Ephesians 5, Chapter 28, verse. The church certainly profits from Christ's love, and that she is granted salvation. But Jesus also benefits from his love in obtaining her as a pure bride. James destroyed what he had to help me be a pure bride. The word of God created the income because of the word that says, "Love thy neighbor as thyself." We need Christ more than he need us. I thank God for his word, because anybody that seeks to put that behind my face seeks to degrade me and not help me. But we all coming for Christ for judgment.
Next is Rachel Allred.
Good afternoon. Rachel Allred, King Arnold Street, Hayfield, Georgia, District 12. I wanted to talk today about like the workforce, workforce ethics, basically how to treat your employees as well as your coworkers just with respect is pretty much what the, what it all starts with. But I'm going to talk about, gonna jump that topic. We're going to talk about the water. I do believe it is a public safety issue. They did say it was like a national security, safety issue, so I do feel like it's appropriate to talk about. When it comes to water, I don't want you guys to spend about $10 million right now fixing the pipelines and fixing this when in about five years from now, once the upper class finds out about alkaline water, then you're going to need to spend another $10 million on the alkaline water. So respectfully, don't say I didn't warn you. In about five years from now, you're going to spend, right now, you're going to spend, you know, millions of dollars on fixing the water situation. And then five years from now, once first class, whatever, goes, oh, my God, where's my alkaline water? Then you're going to have to spend another $10 million on them finding out about alkaline But I was going to talk about those two topics, but the main thing that just continues to stay on my mind, and I was going to take it easy on the MARTA CEO guy or MARTA just in general, whoever's to blame, I don't care. But I was going to take it easy on him, be respectful. But as I continue to take MARTA, I cannot help but say it is absolutely terrible. It continues to be terrible. Now, I am thankful that I do have an option because I don't have a car, but I cannot continue to say things like that because of how terrible it is. It's disrespectful to people to, you know, say, oh, well, I'm grateful. No, it's terrible. I can't, I can't say it anymore because other of my friends are watching. So, you know, not only from a surface level, oh, I don't have a bus driver today, oh, I don't have a driver today, which then goes into safety issues, whatever. Because I don't have a bus driver today, because I don't have a bus today, it goes further than that. I've been hearing stories from previous, previous employees, previous employees, previous onboarding. MARTA gets worse when you think deeper into their business. It's not just not having bus drivers, it's not just not having the schedule on time. It gets worse when you get deeper into, well, what's their training process like? What's their interviewing process like? It gets worse and worse as you get further, and especially for my friends that are trying to get a job. They want to move from the parking division and go up and be the MARTA driver. But it just gets breaking down each level, and it just gets worse as you get closer to it, so, yeah.
All right. That concludes public comment. I just want to mention, Ms. Proler, are you here? Well, we are now going to take your appointment. Since we do have a quorum now, I've been joined by Councilmember Byron Amos, our Vice Chair. So since we do have a quorum now, I will first make a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Boone. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Four yays, zero nays. The agenda is adopted. On the minutes of the last meeting, I'll make a motion to approve those. Is there a second? Second by Vice Chair Amos. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Please vote. The vote is closed.
Four yays, zero nays. Those minutes are approved. Before we move on to presentations, to be respectful of our appointees' time, we're going to pull item number 23 from held. If you'll read that in, please.
A communication from Anne Phillips, President, Atlanta Planning Advisory Board, submitting the appointment of Ms. Adrienne Proler to serve on the Atlanta Citizen Review Board in the Neighborhood Planning Unit, Group S through Z, category. This appointment is for a term of three years.
All right, Ms. Proler, if you could come up to the podium and tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in serving.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Adrienne Proler, and I'm a community health worker at Morehouse School of Medicine. And I've been there going on seven years. And for the, for the past seven years, I have been attending NPU meetings on behalf of Morehouse School of Medicine, NPU X, Y, and Z, also V and T. And as such, I've become very, I'm very active in the community and would like to serve on the Atlanta Citizens Review Board because I think that it's very empowering for people to feel like they can expect a certain standard if they're, if they have any encounter with law enforcement, that they should be able to expect a certain standard of respect. And I also think that they owe law enforcement a certain degree of respect. So I think that ACRB has a great capability of empowering the citizens to know their rights.
Thank you, Ms. Proler. Any questions for the appointee? All right. We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Boone. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Norwood. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Four yays, zero nays. This is favorable. And Ms. Proler, I think I've advised you before, but this will now move to the Committee on Counsel. You will not need to reappear there, nor will you need to reappear when it moves on to the full council. The next time you hear from the city will be from our municipal clerk about probably signing some documents and taking an oath of office. Thank you. Moving on to presentations, our first presentation will be the Atlanta Police Department's Quarterly Update, Chief Darren Sheerbaum.
Good afternoon. Chairman Hillis, Councilmember Boone, Councilmember Norwood, Councilmember Amos. On behalf of all those that serve in the Atlanta Police Department, both are sworn and professional, I want to bring you greetings. Going to go through, I don't know if on your screen, if you're able to see the, the full display.
We have a copy here in front of us. If you want to go ahead and start moving through it, Damon's going to fix the display.
Okay, very good.
There you go.
Going to start, obviously, this is the fourth quarter update for last year. We'll have a lot of 2022 progress and challenges that we encountered. You'll notice that we ended the year at a 0% crime adjustment from the previous year. The adjustment was in two areas. We were 7% down in crimes against persons, which is homicide, rape, and aggravated assault, and then a 1% increase in property crimes with areas around car break-ins and car thefts being noticeable in that area. We wanted to note out a couple of those things. We continue to be challenged with the thefts of Kias and Hyundai's in the city. And this was very pronounced last year and is continuing this year. Just to give you an example, the first quarter of 2022, we had 54 Kias and Hyundai's stolen in our city. When you look at the fourth quarter, which we're reporting out on, we had 203 Kias and Hyundai's that had been stolen in the city. As you all know, there's a manner in which individuals are able to use just a small USB device onto a steering column to start the vehicle. We can see those trends to continue into this year. Again, just a statistic, the weeks one through eight of 2022, we saw 42 Kias and Hyundai's stolen in our city. If you look at the exact same period this year they are in, that number is at 271 Kias and Hyundai's, so over 500% increase in those vehicles. We ask individuals that reside in the city to come and visit here to please take note of that vulnerability. And while the dealers or the manufacturers providing a fix for that, just the purchase of a theft device to go on the steering wheel can deter many of those thefts. So everyone to do their part, and we do have effort underway in some of our zones to be able to provide those to some citizens as well. We also want to note that during the year, especially in May, we were at a 50% increase in our homicide rate in the city. And that was very concerning. The strategies that was used was focusing on the gangs, guns, and drugs, those things that were driving our crime. And as we moved through the year, we actually ended the year at a 6% increase as we started to drop. And then this morning, as I brief you, we're right at a 48% reduction as we stand at 13 homicides in our city, where we'd had 25 this time last year. So we do want to look to our partners that are joining us in that area, all the communities that work closely with the police department, to be able to combat those types of homicides that we can combat. Just a breakdown here, you will see again, we rank what was the, what was the motivations for homicides in our city last year. You will see the escalating dispute was the number one and remains even the number one for this year. Those are those encounters where a gun is present in a moment of anger, and we see it run the gambit from unpaid bills, infidelity issues, parking issues, disputes on a riot range of issues that on the surface would appear minor, but then when anger occurs and we have a gun that's introduced and someone uses that gun, it's very discouraging. What we saw was our impact around narcotics-driven, robbery-driven, and revenge-driven, which are gang-related homicides. We saw those starting to be impacted as we moved through the year. Do want to give a recognition to our homicide unit. They ended their year last year with 79% of a clearance rate for homicides that occurred here inside of our city. That is significant when you look at the national clearance rate being 54% for a homicide. That is happening because we, of the partnership we have in our communities. Citizens willing to bring forward information, call Crime Stoppers, email Crime Stoppers, work with our investigators. The community has such an integral role in that 79% clearance rate. We want to thank everyone that does not wear a badge that believes in the safety and the security of their neighborhood, that partners with this police department. As you know, we have six zones in the city. A well-sought-after prestige is which zone can have the Crime Reduction Award for the, for the year. That will this year go to Zone 2, which had a 14% reduction in crime in the Buckhead neighborhoods. There is a distinction here because they are, this is a zone for the first time in my memory that a zone has won that award back-to-back. And so last year, they were the Crime Reduction Award for the city with a 7% reduction in crime. And then this past year, they had a reduction in 14% in every category with the exception of shoplifting. And so again, for our neighborhood partnership that exists in Zone 2, for everyone from the community that joins us, our partners within the law enforcement community, and just the men and women that serve out of that precinct and that fight crime in all neighborhoods next door at Public Safety Headquarters, we want to give them honors. We give you your fourth quarter report out for their, for their work there. Two areas I just want to look at real quick, I mentioned aggravated assaults and burglaries. Aggravated assaults, we saw work on this year. We actually saw a 10% reduction in person shot over 2022 from the previous year, and 8% reduction in aggravated assault. Lot of work was done around businesses in our city, and so the nightlife commission for their work, the partnerships that we see there were significant. And then the 9% increase around burglaries, which I'm going to give some insight into that very, very shortly. Want to talk real quick about the shootings I just mentioned. 6% reduction, my apologies on that, for shootings for last year when you see the number that occurred in 2021 versus 2022. Our effort is to go after those guns where they exist and where we have a high likelihood that they may be used in the city. Some things are predictable. We know whether there's a drug dealing operation occurring, if you're engaged in running a robbery crew, if you are in a gang, and in certain areas, you have a likelihood. We focused on certain geographic areas throughout the year. We formed a coalition with our partners to be able to focus on those, and then went high-prioritized our arrest warrants for individuals that have a hyperclivity to use violence in the city. One of those was our fall frontier. So you may recall, in my third quarter presentation, we briefed you on summer heat wave, where we partnered with the ATF, with the Sheriff of Fulton County, Georgia State Patrol, the State Attorney General's Office, the DA's office, and we targeted areas in the city which we knew had gang influence. That was very successful. We saw an immediate impact on our robberies, our homicides, and our aggravated assaults over the summer. And so the decision was made to redo that again in the, in the fourth quarter as we ended the year. This is just some of the outcome of that, of that detail. As we worked October through December, we were focused on individuals and places in the city that had a high likelihood for gun violence. We made 74 arrests on individuals that were operating in these areas that were either on probation or parole with a warrant that were dealing drugs in those areas, that were possessing weapons. 16 of those arrests were referred to the, the US Attorney for prosecution. Four gang charges were brought as a result of that investigation, and 26 guns were taken directly from the hands of individuals that were on our street in areas that they were inclined to use them. I want you to just look real quickly at the middle. You see weapons there, extended magazines, just on the handgun. You see an assault rifle at the top. That is, that is very normal for our officers to be removing those type of weaponry right from our city where they're being used. So I do want to commend all of our men and women that engaged in this detail over the summer. We want to thank our state, our federal, and our local partners for their work joining us throughout the fall as we targeted these areas and for the success that they brought about. Just go through some of the arrests that was made by the department this past year. As you will note, that we had an increase in 22% of arrests by the officers, investigators of the Atlanta Police Department. So just some key numbers here. We arrested 1,144 individuals that committed an act of violence, aggravated assault, a felony act of violence against someone in our city, oftentimes with a firearm. We arrested 263 robbers, individuals that held at gunpoint or at knife point or strong-arm robbery, residents and individuals, or visitors to our city. 227 burglary suspects, individuals going into homes and businesses. We arrested 201 individuals that were breaking into cars, and 335 individuals that were stealing cars in our city. And this is the time, I always want to point out, our desire that the next phase of the criminal justice process, which is the courtroom, had the same diligence that the officers and investigators of the Atlanta Police Department has in going and arresting the individuals that are committing crimes in each of your districts, committing crimes in a manner that affect the sense of safety, the actual safety and the livability of our, of our community. So the work of the Atlanta Police Department this past year and our partners, these numbers bear witness to the work they're doing on behalf of our citizens. Going to give a couple of examples, particularly how one individual can really have an impact on a sense of safety in any one of the 245 neighborhoods of Atlanta. This was an individual that was targeting the, actually, the Midtown neighborhood. We had a series of burglaries that were taking place. We, we deployed a special detail just to be in the place and the time where we felt the individual was working. You'll see the middle picture is his handiwork. This is what officers arriving to alarm calls would often find, which would be a busted window, and then liquor missing from inside the establishment. The detail was successful in that an officer that was looking at video clips from the burglaries saw Leslie Cook walking in the neighborhood about the time the burglaries had been occurring, was able to take him into custody. Now, the distinction here is this would have been, this will have been the 37th time that Leslie Cook had been arrested in the United States, and 32 of those 37 cycles had a burglary inside of them. And he was out on probation from Gwinnett and Fulton County at the time that we took him into custody. We have connected him to eight burglaries, all in the Midtown community, but I just use this as an example to show how one individual, active in your district, can impact the sense of safety that, that our citizens are looking for when they reside here in Atlanta, Georgia. But want to thank the work of the officers assigned to our Zone 4 precinct for this apprehension here. I've always said at this podium, and I will continue to say it, that wherever a drug dealing operation is occurring in the city of Atlanta, it is a ticking time bomb for violence. If there is a drug dealing operation in your district, there will be only a matter of time before the weapons used to protect that drug dealing operation is used. And so I'm going to just give you some statistics here. If you look at the increase of in 2021, we removed, we removed $308,000 worth of narcotics from the streets. That was up to 2.8 million in the previous year. We seized 111 guns directly from drug dealing operations, and we executed 75 search warrants, which means every five days in, in last year in 2022, the officers, investigators of the Atlanta Police Department were shutting down a drug dealing operation in the city, going directly to the location. Where if I look back at the crime in each of your respective districts, I can draw a direct correlation back to a drug dealing operation that contributed to a shooting or a homicide that happened there. Going to give an example here, this is from Zone 2 Buckhead. We had good information that came in from a, a, a department complex, so they felt there was something suspicious going on inside the apartment complex. Our investigators worked that area, and then was able to develop probable cause for a search warrant. Now, you will see on the left side of the screen, a safe, a large safe, and I want to thank the Atlanta Fire Rescue for their cooperation here. They, they used their extrication tools to open it, Mr. Chairman. And once they opened inside, you will see what was in there, which was 84 pounds of marijuana and two and a half pounds of mushrooms. But here's what's more significant. What we removed from that location was, was on the right side of your screen, which was five handguns, two assault rifles, three assault rifles that you see on the screen. Had that warrant not been executed, eventually, on Call Your Road, those weapons would have been used to either protect those drugs if someone comes to take them, or to also move against someone else's drug dealing operation. So I want to thank what doesn't make the headlines often, the good work that is going on every day out of our narcotics unit with our partners in the zone. Many of those tips comes directly from your offices, and we want to thank you for passing along the information that allows us to be effective in the neighborhoods, because this will ensure that there's never a headline written or a new story that's carried about someone that died as a result of those weapons being fired, and no one injured as a result of those weapons being fired. And just part of the work going on in Atlanta last year in the fourth quarter to reduce crime in our city. These are the gun recovery numbers as we ended last year. You'll see we recovered 2,200, I'm sorry, 2,513 firearms from right here in the city from a wide range of initiatives, traffic stops, arrest warrants, special details, which I covered earlier, deployment of our K9s around areas where we believe guns are being, being held. And you'll also notice why Zone 5 is down for the year. They are still number two out of the zones for recovered, and if you noticed the previous year, they had a high number of guns that were recovered in 2021 out of Zone 5. Repeat offenders continues to be a challenge for us as a police department. And a repeat offender under the statutory definition is an individual that has three felony convictions or more. And so last year, 26% of all of our felony arrests were committed by a person that met that statutory definition of a repeat offender. Some of the numbers here are quite telling. Last year, we arrested 889 individuals that met that statutory definition of three felony convictions or more. You will see, when you look at the left side of the screen, those individuals, what percentage of the arrests that we made in each category was made up by a repeat offender. Those 889 individuals are responsible for 29,988 arrests among them, as well as 6,000 Those 889 individuals are responsible for 29,988 arrests among them, as well as 6,039 felony convictions among them. We also had over 30% that were armed with a handgun at the time that we arrested them and also over 50% were on probation or parole at the time that we arrested them. So the work of the repeat offender commission carried out by the Sheriff of Fulton County, the District Attorney, the Atlanta Police Foundation continues to work in this area to ensure that we stay focused on those individuals that are active in our neighborhoods and are committing the most serious of crimes that we know that focusing on this will see the reductions that we saw throughout the second part of, of last year. And we hope to continue that in this year. Last year, we were able to hire 212 individuals. We still had a number in the pipeline as we ended the year, so those will filter in this year. You also note that we had 806 police recruits that were graduated in 2022. You also notice we had seven lateral officers brought into the department. We also had rehires that was done. And keeping in mind that the state only requires 10 weeks and two days of training to be certified as a police officer, but our officers, officers serving your community will train for 35 weeks before they are assigned to a precinct and making sure that our curriculum is fully aligned with the 21st century policing principles laid out by the Obama Justice Department. As we ended the quarter last year, we had some great large events in the downtown space that went off without any incident. We had the Peach Bowl Parade, followed by the exciting Peach Bowl Game between Ohio State and Georgia Bulldogs, and then the Peach Drop that occurred right at midnight. So the work that was done by all the partners that joined us in that space, the officers, as you know, work 12 hour shifts. They have their off days canceled on that day just to ensure that Atlanta is the welcoming place that everyone looks to as we bring in, in, in a new year. And then we want to continue to talk about our Take Home Car Program, which we want to thank the administration for. When we look at individuals that leave to go to other agencies, reasons they said that, that they would like to have stayed with the Atlanta Police Department is a Take Home Car Program. And so by the support of this committee and the City Council and the mayor, we have started ruling those out. We have four more going out this week. We now have vehicles present in all six of our zones. So I hope you're seeing them in your district as well. And then we'll work to make sure that we have them quickly as possible into all of the districts. And then finally, as we ended the year, and this number has grown again, so on our next report to this committee, you'll see these numbers have grown significantly. We now have at the end of the year, over 13,322 cameras that are now integrated into Connect Atlanta. We have 7,677 cameras that are registered with Connect Atlanta. That is truly the, the neighborhood watch of the 21st century. Every day I am seeing, I mentioned in a significant report where the system is being used to find a lost person, an at-risk adult, or that is making an apprehension that is meaningful into the safety of our communities. So Mr. Chairman, that is the quarterly report outs for the Public Safety Committee. Open for any questions you or the members of the committee may have.
Thank you, Chief. We'll go to questions now. We also have been joined by Councilmember Lewis, and you are up for questions.
Chief, thank you for coming this morning.
Yes, sir.
I think I have a few questions and I don't know how you, how you feel about it. The steering wheel lock giveaway, where is the funding coming from for this?
So we see some of them coming from the actual manufacturers themselves that are giving money to be able to put the, these devices into the community.
And do you know where we will be doing a distribution for this?
So that's, that's being worked on now. That will be done in a manner to be able to go to individuals who have already been victims, individuals that may have been repeat victims in certain neighborhoods. We know have definitive patterns and we'll be working to distribute that, but there's nothing definitive that has been created at this time.
I would like to be a part of that in conjunction with the lockbox ordinance. I think they will both go to help a lot of people when it comes to crime prevention, when it comes to cars. Next is similar to the Cop City, a lot of folks have been talking about it, not Cop City, the Police Training Facility. Make sure I always say it right because a lot of folks, they're Public Safety Training Facility. What's the effect of our police officers being pulled from their line of duty to actually guard the training facility?
We are being very mindful when we do any deployment in, in the city, Councilmember Lewis, that we do not negatively impact any police function that we have. So we're very strategic about who is deployed there. We're very strategic about the numbers that we place there, what hours they work, they, how long they work there. It's very driven by intelligence. It's being driven by what actions, individuals that are inclined to use criminal acts to stop the project or to damage equipment. It is all very driven by that. Our goal is to continue to do all that is asked of the Atlanta Police Department. We're continuing to fight crime aggressively in, in every zone that we have. We continue to ensure that equipment is not damaged, first responders aren't attacked and workers aren't attacked. And so we make sure that the, the numbers are appropriate, but they are not in any way excessive at the detriment of any of other of our missions that we have in the city.
How much money per day are we spending to provide security of the training facility? And are we doing this for anyone else, any other organization? Like, are we doing this for anyone else who's trying to build? I know I got a lot of development going on in my district and I don't see the police doing this for anyone. In fact, when, so I want to know, do you know we're doing, APD is doing this for someone else, which we're not charging them. In fact, when I have youth events, I've been, I've been asked to go find my own security for those events and I've been finding money to actually pay for that. So my, my questions are, how much money per day would, would we, are we spending to provide security? How much, do we do this for anyone else? Those are two questions I wanted to ask.
Yeah, certainly, Councilmember Lewis. So right now, I do not have any numbers in front of me on what may, because it's always on a scalable, what may be there one day is not there the next day. It's always determined on the, what information we have, what we're seeing. This is the only public safety training center we've built in my time on the Atlanta Police Department. So I don't think there's a correlation of have we ever built a public safety training center before to be able to make a comparison. And then secondly, we've never seen anyone use the violence that's been used to try to stop this project. So it is the first time because we've never had these two projects intersecting in that manner.
I do know that city right up north of us, Drew Hill Road sits on it, Brookhaven. Brookhaven built a public safety training facility. I would like to know if we can find out if the, whoever they built it with, if they provided their police officers, because I think that when I'm looking at Zone Three police crime numbers, I want to see it go down even further.
Right.
But I'm trying to think about how many police are we pulling per shift? So I can see is there any correlation with crime going up at that time period or what's going on? So do you know how many police we're pulling from, speaking for me, Zone Three to go over?
No, sir, because that depends on a day-to-day basis.
Who would know that? Because I, I know that we are, in the city of Atlanta, our mayor, we said we want to get to 2,000 police officers and we, I'm a, I'm a data man. I'm just thinking about the data. So that means that we need a certain amount of police officers to cover per shift for the city of Atlanta. So when we have this off, off, something we've never done before, we're doing it right now for an organization with a lot of money, an organization that's supposed to be doing this on their own from what they told us, an organization that's doing this right now, how are we affecting crime in Zone Three right now? So can we find out how many police officers are being, being pulled from Zone Three, District 12, because I want to know how we're being affected?
Right. And we'll be able to provide those types of information. Councilmember Lewis, I clearly don't have it with me today, but I can tell you this, the officers being used, when they're used, come from different divisions and so they are not coming exclusively from any zone in the city. And they're being done in a manner to make sure that we continue to be effective in crime fighting.
According to Morris Diggs, right, on the Fox Five, 40,000 per day is what we're spending for, to, to send our police officers over to DeKalb County, not part of Atlanta, to send our police officers over there. That's what we're spending per day. And the only police precinct, the only portion that isn't sending police officers over is the Atlanta Airport because their police are paid by federal dollars. And I want to, I, I just want my police officers to be in my district, protecting the folks in my district because we need that kind of help. And I'm trying to strengthen, I'm trying my best to support the, the building of this facility and, and everything that's supposed to be going on, but I gotta pay for kids to come, I gotta pay for, for police to come watch our kids on Cleveland Avenue, in which we didn't have them, that the one day the young man was ran over and hit by a car. And so I'm having to pay police to come and do stuff for kids, to go to our gyms, to go to our rec center, watch midnight basketball. But at the same time, over in DeKalb County, not in Atlanta, we're sending our police officers per district, right? So from District 12, Zone Three, which is two city council districts away from that, we're sending our folks over there and we having real crime going on. And so I'm just confused as to why we're doing this for them and we don't do it for nobody else. And also I would like to know if we're doing this, is there a way we can go back and get some back pay? Because our police officers, they do love extra jobs, right? They do love to go out and, they wouldn't mind going out and actually working out there but getting paid for an extra job. So is there a way we can look at the city being reimbursed or look at moving forward that the, our police officers can go and make as much money as they want during an extra job? You can hire as many people as you want, an extra job, but I don't want to see two police officers or three police, not even one police officer pulled from District 12, Zone Three portion from this day moving forward, if we can.
Next up is Vice Chair Byron Amos.
Chief, how you doing today?
Doing good, sir.
Let me just stop and thank you and your leadership and your officers for coming out for Clippers and Cops. You guys came out, I don't want to say took over a barbershop, but you invaded a barbershop, invited the public in, and it was a wonderful conversation. A lot of people got a lot of questions answered. And the mayor came, you came, sheriff, it was all type of leadership from law enforcement on ML King. And I made a statement then, the last time that type of activity took place on ML King, it was over someone that had actually been killed, but this time, everything was peaceful. It was a good interaction with the community. So I want to start by saying thank you for that and your team for putting it together. Just a thought, when we, when it comes to the crime reduction awards, do we look at that as far as through the eyes of staffing? Of course, more officers in the zone, you're able to do more things. Now, not to diminish the work of any of our officers, all of them were wonderful and hard working, but if, I know one, sometimes the numbers may flip to where some precincts may end up with more, some zones may end up with more officers they can put in the street than others. So if we can look at that to see, and, and because I know, I know we also share strategies as well, so that's already been done. And then the last thing is looking into the future, because I know each event is different. 2026 World Cup, who would be in charge of security and who would do the traffic plan for the games?
Certainly. And so to go into each of those, obviously we fight crime in the city with the full size and expertise of the Atlanta Police Department. And so as everyone looks to their, their local precinct as well, keep in mind, we have Public Safety Headquarters just two blocks from here, where a great number of resources leave and go out throughout the city to fight crime. So we are, we are fighting crime with our partners, with the full size and expertise of this agency. We have never looked at the zone's core base assignments of personnel. We always have looked at just the reduction overall, understanding that it is done in partnership with many others as well. 2026, we're getting excited about that already. This will be very similar to when we host the Super Bowl and that will be working with the host committee and we'll be working very closely with our federal partners. And so this will be a joint security committee that will be working, that will have local, state and, and federal representation on it as we get closer to 2026. The traffic plan will be very close, I would say, to the Super Bowl plan, where it will be created by that committee and will be staffed by multiple agencies, but there will be a section commander that will control the traffic flow as we get closer to that event. You know, we'll also be doing something similar for the college football championship game, which will be occurring in 2025 and just potentially the DNC next year. And so we're already starting to put in place the infrastructure to be able to do our part as the Atlanta Police Department on the committees that will be formed. And so as we get closer, we can give you more insight to that. But if you remember around the Super Bowl, it will be very similar to that. It will be a, a, a host committee with a multi-jurisdictional law enforcement component, which APD has a heavy lift in.
Okay, thank you. And realize in different place, different time, different leadership in the city, but just want to remind us all, last Super Bowl, there was a wall, an actual wall built down North Side Drive and everything that was west of that wall was forgotten about. So just to put that on the hearts and the minds of the committee.
Duly noted. We get, we always understand this, and that's why oftentimes you see us go to 12 hour shifts, off days canceled. If we are hosting a big event here in Atlanta, we still have to continue to deliver police services. That's our responsibility. And so that we do so in a manner, whether walls being literal or figurative, Councilmember doesn't affect anyone in District Three in the manner that they receive services from the Atlanta Police Department. So 2026, I'll make a note, you have my commitment, that we will make sure that we're actively involved in, in your district.
And last but not least, thank you and your team and every officer in blue for everything that you do.
What is the current status of our academy classes? How many do we have actively going? How many are in Class Zero, et cetera?
Yes, sir. So right now, we currently have five classes that are in session. We have two that are in field training. That is the last 12 weeks of their training. We have three that are in the classroom portion. Right now, we're slated, we have 38 in Class Zero, we have 106 than are the other five classes.
And over the past year, 2022, what was the net gain in officers and what, how many did we lose to retirement versus resignation or termination?
Right. So we had, we were seven under where we were the previous time last year, but I think it's important to note that we had two that passed away, unfortunately, from our department. And then we had seven that we terminated for suitability to the profession. If you go back to the year prior to that, we had a loss of 39 officers. So we actually saw an improvement as we ended 2022, and I have to give credit here. We saw the administration with the support of the council, of the mayor, do the retention bonus of $4,000 for our officers in August. And then the 9% cost of living increase that took place January 1st. That was key. That was very key because we have a lot of jurisdictions around that like to hire Atlanta police officers, Councilmember Lewis, you referred to it, right? And so for those actions to take place of a retention bonus, right after the budget started, for the cost of living increase, the Take Home Car Program, the new facilities that are coming, we started to see in the second part of 2022, a positive impact. So we're confident as we get into 2023, we continue our recruitment initiatives, but we want to keep who we have. If we've invested in you for that period of time, we want you to stay with the Atlanta Police Department. And this is, there's no other city like Atlanta, Georgia. Your, your career is more fulfilled when you're at Atlanta, Georgia. We have a lot of, of opportunities that no other department has. And so we're going to continue to build on that. And with the support of the Take Home Car Program, the, the competitive pay increases to ensure we stay in line with our neighboring jurisdictions, I believe we're going to continue to build on the number that was stabilized in 2022.
Somewhat staying on that same subject about building our department. I know we have a citywide paying class study hopefully progressing, but what are some of the things you as leader in APD, you're looking to bring to APD to make our department, APD, the most desired police department to work at in the Southeast?
As the, the mayor and the city council works on, on salary and benefits, there's things that only the chief can do and the command staff that can do, which is to ensure that opportunities for promotion and training are open and available to everyone that would desire, to make sure we're bringing in first-class training that is only available in Atlanta, Georgia. Last year, we made the change that our in-service, which had been kind of a one-size-fits-all in, in service, that is now rank-specific. So when you go to the academy, you, you receive in-service training that is specific to what you do, how you're protecting the communities right now. The building of the Public Safety Training Center is key in that to be able to have officers remain and stay with the Atlanta Police Department. We have neighboring jurisdictions that have training centers that are, that are very quality training centers to make sure we have the best in the business as well. Also expanding our APLI, the Atlanta Police Leadership Institute, not just for those that may be looking for supervision, to move into the next realm of supervision, but that should be, you want to be the best police officer that you can for the neighborhood that you serve, to ensure that we're giving opportunities there. And then just to let the men and women of this department, everyone that works in our professional staff, works in the crime scene techs, 911 GCIC, and our, our police officers, that they see their commanders and that they know we appreciate the work that they do. And last year, we, we revamped how we showed appreciation for officers. No longer is that a, done on Thursday at Cobra, we actually go to the roll call of every officer that has won an Excellence Award that week and they receive the award from the chief, from the assistant chief, from one of the deputy chiefs, right there on roll call, and thanking the, the officers for the great work they did, whether it was an act of bravery or an act of compassion or a lifesaving act. We want them, the officers of this department to know we appreciate them and the work they're doing. So it's, it's about providing them a work environment, Chairman Hill, is where they're appreciated, where their works are acknowledged, as we work with you and the administration, this, the city council and the administration, to give them the cars, the facilities that they deserve, if they're going to protect Atlanta, Georgia.
Yeah, and one item you mentioned that we haven't introduced legislation on with a number of co-sponsors, Vice Chair Amos has introduced legislation on with a number of co-sponsors, is new cruisers, certainly a Take Home Car Program. Know we're having issues, we've ordered, I believe, over 300 of these, but we're having issues with the outfitters, you know, getting radios installed, light bars, things like that. Where are we with, you know, getting our current, uh, suppliers more capacity, or seeking uh, resources out of state to get these, get these cars, uh, these, um, cruisers rolled out to our officers?
We do, and we appreciate the support of the mayor's initiative for the take-home car program. I know you recently approved a purchase for 200 more vehicles. Uh, what we're doing now, because as I speak to chiefs from across the country and the region, it is a industry, it's a, it's a profession-wide challenge that we're having right now. Uh, and we, as I have personally met with our vendors, seeing what can be done to expand the capacity. Right now, we're looking out-of-state. Uh, do we have out-of-state vendors that aren't currently present in Georgia? Would they be willing to relocate temporarily to Georgia? Open operations so we can get our vehicles in there? Uh, we're looking at similar work vendors that do work that's maybe one-off from what is being asked for, to get them trained up quickly to be able to move, uh, into that area, and we're trying to support our vendors to do anything we can do to move through more quickly. So I was recently speaking with the chief from a neighboring jurisdiction, it took him six, uh, I may have these reversed, it took him six months to purchase his squad cars, eight months to equip them. And so it's a challenge that we're seeing across the country, uh, but we're doing everything that we can do with a city our size to be able to pull those levers to get our vehicles prioritized, uh, get our vehicles moved through, because we want to see them, uh, in your districts, uh, just as much as you do.
Great, two more questions, I'll pass off to, uh, Councilmember Boone. We have been inquiring with, uh, departments under our purview, public safety departments about a, uh, where each department is with, in regards to a strategic plan, uh, for, uh, replacement of, you know, fire stations, police precincts, things like that. So does APD, uh, currently have one of those? And if so, can we get that information? I would imagine there would be a timeline associated with it, a cost for each, each project, um, if you could get that to us.
We do, we'll provide it to you. Just some high level, as you know, uh, leaving 180 South Side Industrial, which is where our training center was and special operations was, has been a priority, just because of the unsafe conditions at that facility. The, we're temporarily being housed at Atlanta Metro-Pont State College, that was our number one facility to replace. Special operations will be moved out within the next 60 days. Uh, they'll actually be much closer to the center of the city, so they can get to areas much more quickly as we need them, under critical events or just normal large-scale operations. And then the Zone 4 precinct is the next precinct slated to be, uh, replaced under the latest bond. And then we do have them ranked after that, what order is funding is made available, which precincts will be replaced, uh, at that point.
Yeah, if you could just, uh, send-
We'll get that for you.
-that information. Uh, lastly, um, as you know, well before your time as chief, we've had issues with 911. I know that's, uh, something high on your priority list, high on, uh, CAO Amos' priority list, but if you could just give us an update as to where we are with 911 improvements and, uh, if we have seen those improvements since the, uh, changes that were made?
We have, there's a couple areas we're focusing on. Obviously, we had technology needs that have been addressed, and we want to thank the administration, the council for their support for that. Uh, we also have had staffing, uh, working, increased the staffing there. As you remember from some of the previous report outs, uh, the average answer time was hovering above 30 seconds, uh, about midpoint last year, third quarter last year. As of this morning, our average time this year was at 11 seconds. So we have started to see a significant improvement around our ability to migrate the calls into the right trunks they need to go to, what is an emergency, what is not an emergency, being able to put calls on hold, and being able to use processes that have been put in place have, uh, been beneficial, and we're starting to see an improvement. And then just to commend the hard-working individuals at the Atlanta E-911 Center. Uh, if you haven't been there lately, visit, uh, that is a great room where we have dedicated individuals that are truly the first first responders, and for them to be working very hard to ensure that their voice of compassion and, and direction into those critical phases of emergency are being heard and assisting. So while it is hiring more people, and while it is getting new technology, at the end of the day, it's the person behind the phone that cares and that is very skilled to save a life. And so I think we have to give the credit where credit's due around the leadership there and the, and all those working in the 911 Center.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Councilmember Boone.
Thank you, Chief, for being here. Chief, thank you all for, um, the wonderful results that we have seen at, um, Lynn Hurst and ML King during the drive. Um, we have a long way to go, but we have seen remarkable results from Major Clay of Zone 4. Thank you so much. We've had over 70 arrests, um, in the past six to seven weeks, and we really do appreciate that, so thank you all for making that a priority. Um, Chief, um, what is our goal in numbers for officers? What would be our ideal goal?
Right now, our authorized strength is right at 2,035. My goal is to have this department back at, working with our partners, working with administrations, back to that, uh, by the time that we host the World Cup. I do not believe that's out of the realm of possibility. Uh, it starts by keeping who we have and winning back those that may want to return to the Atlanta Police Department. So 2,035 is the authorized strength. Uh, I think you can do studies that look at the number of visitors that we have to our city, the large-scale events to our city that says it may potentially more could be used, particularly when we host those events, but right now, that's where our target is, to be back to our authorized strength.
And how many do we presently have?
Right now, we're just above 1,500.
We're 1,500, and our goal is 2,035.
35, yes, we're just, we're, we're closer to 1,600, some 1,600 right in there.
Okay, how is the security at the airport presently?
We work to keep it safe, ma'am. It is the world's busiest airport, uh, it is the world's most efficient airport, and so we use all of our skills to be able to protect that facility. Obviously, we have officers assigned there, we have a range of assets that are kept there, uh, that do capabilities to protect it both against threats and that may emerge or be predictive, and then we work with our federal partners for the airport.
So you are satisfied with the security at the airport?
We're always working to improve wherever we are in the city, ma'am. But yes, any, any incidents I'm made aware of, we will always do a review to see if any processes could have been changed or any enhancements are needed.
Okay, um, could you tell me a little bit about your recapture program? How does that work exactly? Is since we are at 1,500 and we ideally like 2,035, tell me a little bit about your recapture program.
Yes, ma'am. Recapture is to hire back an individual that has a unique skill set that can align it for need, or to fill an open vacancy, uh, that we consider a priority. So we have a list of those that are maintained, uh, individuals that will approach us and say, "I want to recapture," and we will provide them a list of options of where they can recapture.
Okay, so, for instance, if we had a very, very experienced major, um, in the City of Atlanta that produced, um, for the City of Atlanta, they were with the city pro, approximately well over 30 years, I believe, would they be offered something, scanning tickets at the airport instead of putting them, you know, in a location where they could be utilized?
They would have a list, and though that list evolves month by month what's available, and so whatever the need was at that point for the City of Atlanta would have been offered to them. There's usually three or four assignments that one can pick from.
I, I really would hope that we would reach back, I really hope that we would reach back and look at some of those retirees that are sitting at home watching General Hospital right now. Um, I don't know how the politics go, I'm not a police officer, but to have people with the skill set, the skill set that we need, and they're going to Subway, I see them at Publix on Cascade, I'm like, why aren't you working? You're 42, you've got 20 more years. Why aren't you working? Why are we offering guys that, and, and with this skill set, why are we letting them go to other jurisdictions? I cannot understand that. But I would hope that you and your team would go outside of the box and reach back and get some of those strong leaders that we have offered things like scanning tickets at the airport.
Right, I'll look into the scanning-
Sitting at the front desk at City Hall. You know, let's take the politics out of it, that, let's take it out, because I know they're strong leaders. They're strong, because they ran those police departments, look at the numbers. Let's reach back and do the right thing so that we, we're proud of you guys. But let's reach back and let's look at those guys that are at home, that South Fulton have, they've not been picked up yet, but they're being interviewed. And let's be fair to the City of Atlanta, we've trained them, we paid for this training, we've spent gogobs of money on their education, and, and they're at home now. So let's look at trying to reach back and get those folks that are at home. Um, I've given out at least 12 proclamations to these guys, and, and I, I'm sure they'll be willing to come back with this expertise. Let's look at that list, we're 1,500 now, let's reach our goal. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Councilmember Boone, Councilmember Lewis, back to you.
And, and for some reason, I went and did some numbers. I keep telling folks I'm a data guy, and so I just wanted to do some numbers. Uh, the, at $40,000 per day that we're spending, because I was thinking about things we can do, I think that the Atlanta Police Department is the strongest and best police department in the country, right? I got people from Dallas calling me, asking me, can they recruit our police? I said that nowhere in the world I would help you, uh, get our folks. And the reason why I think that is because we have the best mixture, the demographics. Uh, when you think about the young man in Zone 3 who stole a police officer's car and then drove to the train stage, I meant train tracks, and the police officers didn't let that young man die, they didn't pull out a gun on him, they snatched him out the car, uh, seconds later, the train hit the police car, and the police, they weren't afraid. This is one of our new police cars, and so, uh, I wanted to make sure, I, I, I commend you on the training, when thinking about 35 weeks of training versus 10 weeks, I can see it actually working, right? Uh, even, even the young man who, uh, bless him, who was, uh, shot over six times on Cleveland Avenue, serving an arrest warrant to a gang member, uh, he still didn't kill that young man, that young man is in jail right now. He didn't die on the streets, which in, in any other city, any other time in my life, I've never seen someone shoot a police officer and, and walk and live to tell the story, right? Uh, I think that we've done some real good jobs of training in our city, uh, but now I'm thinking about the morale of young folks, because we got a lot of good young police officers who are being forced to, uh, work some that they know should be an extra job. I think they all think they should be getting $250 an hour, uh, for working at that police facility for 24 hours a day. So I want to do some numbers, uh, on what it's costing the taxpayer. Uh, if Morse digs to be true at $40,000 per day, uh, we're spending 280,000 weekly? That means we're spending 1.12 monthly. Uh, when we think about the police cars, in which my councilmember colleague, Dustin Hill has brought up a little bit earlier, and I, I'm looking at this picture, I see myself in this picture, I, I can't think of a time in my life in which the police actually used me as a promo in a picture, uh, but for the police cars, I'm in this picture. The police cars, we just passed a paper last week that I voted in favor of, but that I took my name off of because of the price of the cars. Uh, thinking about what we're spending per day, per month, per year, uh, we could buy two, we could purchase 211 police cars at 69, $69,000, uh, that's with all the equipment, if we were not doing this with the taxpayers' dollars. I wanted to make sure I talked about that, because I think that's something we should look into. Uh, $40,000 a day is a, is a lot of money, and Major Ricker is doing everything he can in Zone 3, everything he can in Zone 3. Uh, this picture, I'm thinking about what he's doing when he's losing two people per shift, or I, I don't think it's per day, because we say our police officers are working 12-hour shifts, and when he losing two people per shift, uh, when we think about how stretched he is, uh, when we think about those gas stations that, that young people are dying at. And so I want to send this to the APF or whoever's out there that got all that money. Think about our kids that I gotta pay security to go and be, uh, we gotta pay police to go be security at those games. So is any other, my, my question to you before, I know I'm rambling a little bit, my question to you is, is any other police department doing what we are doing for the police training, for the public safety training facility? Is the Fulton County Sheriff's Office, is the Cab County Sheriff's Office, is the Cab County Police Department doing what APD is doing, in which we're, uh, spending $40,000 per day of taxpayer dollars to ask our police officers to go out there? So tell, can you find out, it don't have to be right now, I know we got real good police officers and real good information, we can send a text message and probably get this information to find out if any other police department is paying them, because they're partners. APF is a partner with APD, they would tell you that information. So I would like if we can get it before this, uh, committee meeting is over, but I understand if I can't, right? So that's my question. And my second question is, if there's any kind of way that we can look into ways in which the APF, uh, works with us on paying us back for some of this funding, because, uh, we do know we're spending, we've done everything in conjunction that we can, uh, with doing housing, we've done everything we can to make sure we help them out and making sure this happens. I want to make sure that our taxpayers are, are repaid, or that our young men and women who are police officers who need that extra job check, they're taken care of. So I appreciate you on that.
Certainly. Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. All right, we've been joined by our colleague, Councilmember Bond, and I believe he has some questions for you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Chief, for your presentation and leadership of the department. I have a question, though, it concerns the, uh, police precinct out at the airport. I understand that there has been another large rodent found in offices there, and we passed a resolution last year, uh, requesting that there be some look at how the officers are deployed, or rather, where they're stationed at the airport. I know you don't have exclusive control over the airport as far as the build-out, but has there been any progress or conversations with the airport management about finding a better, uh, situation for the precinct? And also as an addendum to that, the parking, you know, where, uh, the work vehicles are parked, but also where the personal vehicles of the officers are located? So can you give us an update on that?
Certainly, Councilmember. We're obviously in communication with the airport management, uh, to not only ensure we have the proper facilities for our officers, be it new or just upgrading the ones that they may be in. So anything that may be identified as being deficient, uh, that's brought to us, uh, to our attention by the airport commander, uh, to us, we will be immediately working with the airport to address. We do know there's a new facility for our drug interdiction team, uh, that will be opening soon, uh, which is a very nice portion of it. We're going to make sure that the all officers assigned to the precinct have a proper space to, to work in and have the proper equipment to do their job. So that is an ongoing communication. Anytime we're made aware of anything, we immediately alert the air, airport, and they have been very responsive, uh, to move quickly to address anything we bring to their attention.
Well, I just want to implore you to lean on them some more, uh, because as the, the airport is ever-expanding, ever-developing, ever-building, and it seems like things are being built around that precinct, or projects are, oh, they're always going ahead of either renovating that space or just giving them a, you know, a bill, a, a better space to be in, uh, that's more centrally located and doesn't have the same reoccurring pest issues that that, uh, particular office has, because as I understand, they couldn't even, once that pest was discovered, they couldn't even use the, obviously, a need to be fumigated. So that, that was a day that no work, well, I don't want to say any work was done, but at least no administrative work-
Right.
-could be done on that particular Friday, so I want to appreciate you, uh, for that. And I, I don't want to be redundant, because I am tardy today, uh, to, to, to come into the, uh, ma, making this meeting from an eye appointment, but I did want to follow up to see, uh, and I don't know if it was, Councilmember Lewis, I don't, but I don't want to be, uh, jump my intuition back, backwards in time, but I do want to ask about the ongoing, is there an ongoing, uh, threat at the construction site, uh, for the new police precinct? I know that we have our officers out there patrolling, and just wanted to ask, you know, I know they can patrol in that area, uh, but what do they do if something does happen? Because that is outside of the city.
Yes, sir. We ensure that everyone that is out there has at least certain members that are deputized. Uh, so we have a number of deputized officers that are there, should something occur, we were very close with Chief Ramos and her department. Uh, yes, there has been ongoing issues within the last two weeks, uh, three pieces of construction equipment have been set on fire, uh, within very close, close proximity to the construction site, it wasn't related to this, uh, but it was in an area that someone may have thought it was. And so we do know there are individuals still active, still using, uh, violence and, and damage and destruction of property that are very active in the space.
And, uh, I guess lastly, uh, I want, I wanted to ask, how is our recruitment and retention going? I mean, I know that all departments in the country are challenged to hire new people, but given the, I guess, the, the media coverage of the, uh, issues around the facility, uh, given what is already a challenge to hire people to come to that profession, how, how are we doing on, on our-
Yes, sir, we currently-
... and retaining?
Yes, Councilmember, we currently have 106 recruits in training, uh, which is a very high number. I used to command the training academy. Uh, we have five classes, two that are in field training, that's the phase just before they go, uh, to the precinct, uh, within the city, and then we have three that are in classroom, and then we have, uh, 38, uh, recruits that are in Class Zero status, which means they'll be in the next class starting in April.[1797.42] So we anticipate our recruitment will allow us to continue starting a class every other month. And then our effort, as we were speaking of earlier, is to keep who we have on the Atlanta Police Department, that we're doing all we can through bonuses, through the cost of living increase. Though those had an immediate impact, once the mayor pulled the trigger, on the retention bonus as well as the cost of living increase, the Take Home Car Program. We can see that. And then the movement of the new precinct in Zone Four, the new Public Safety Training Center. That allows us to ensure our officers are working in the professional environment that we want them to work into. And then when we do have leased spaces, working very aggressively and closely with those leadership to make sure we rectify any issues such as what you just brought up.
So as that close out, even though we, I guess, are still trending toward a high rate, a high vacancy rate, just for the public's information, Atlanta is still the largest police agency in the state of Georgia.
We are, sir.
That's larger than the State Patrol.
That is correct, sir.
Thank you. I withdraw, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, any further questions or comments for the chief?
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we will have the quarterly report from the Atlanta Citizen Review Board. Mr. Samuel Reed, Executive Director, welcome.
Thank you, Jared Hales, Vice Chair, Amos and councilmembers Boone, Norwood, Bond, and Lewis. My name is Lee Reed, Executive Director of the Atlanta Citizen Review Board. I'm here today to speak on the second quarter FY23 quarterly report. Okay. Before I get started, I want to alert the public to who we are and what we do and why we do the work we do. The ACRB is an independent investigative agency authorized to investigate citizen complaints against Atlanta police and corrections officers. We do our work fairly, thoroughly, and independently and with integrity. We stand for supporting citizen confidence in policing by having the best officers serving the community. And we do this because to enhance the public safety through the promotion of officer accountability. Any citizen who would like to file a complaint against Atlanta police or corrections officer must file that complaint within three hundred and sixty-five days. It must be against an Atlanta police or corrections officer, must be signed. And they can file that complaint by phone, website, email, in person, or the complaint portal. Complaints can also be filed anonymously. The agency received authority to self-initiate investigations that involve officer-involved shootings and officer-involved deaths and use of a taser or stun guns that may result in serious bodily injury or death. Okay. And then on this slide here, you have the accepted allegations. I won't read all of them, but they're abuse of authority, excessive force, use of language, inappropriate, I mean, appropriate action required, conduct, harassment, retaliation. We have about fifteen allegations that we can accept. We have a catch-all for violation of department standard operating procedures. So that's the preliminary information I wanted the community to know so that they can use our services. But today, I want to speak on the second quarter report that I mentioned earlier. And we're going to proceed as follows, going through the election of our new board members, I mean, new board leadership, talk about the second quarter data, community outreach and engagement, moving the oversight needle, challenges and action items. During the February meeting, the board elected new officer leadership for the board. Dorothy Hurst is the chair of the board with the, she's with the Neighborhood Planning Unit M through R, and that's with the Atlanta Planning and Advisory Board. Tamara Orange is our vice chair. She's with the Georgia Coalition for the People's Agenda. And Leah Pulliam is our board secretary with the Urban League of Great Atlanta. Today, with the chair's permission, I'd like to have Ms. Dorothy Hurst come up and say a couple of comments as the new chair.
Good afternoon. As Executive Reed said, I'm Dorothy Hurst, and I am the new chair of the ACRB. I was confirmed by your committee August seventeenth, twenty twenty, and I represent MPUM through R through APAB. And I was sworn in August twenty-sixth. Now, I support APD, but I also hold them accountable. Because those are two different things. You can support and hold people accountable. I was chair of MPUM Public Safety for sixteen years. You see, if you talk to the chief of police, he'll tell you on one day, I'm having a serious accountability conversation with them. But the next day, I'm in the precinct bringing them cookies or muffins. Because I believe that you can have those conversations, but you can also keep good relationships with them. You see, because the community, as a community, we all are accountable. I believe the ACRB provides that fair and transparent opportunity for people to bring complaints forward. I'm honored to be in that process so that people can bring those complaints forward. And I am honored to be on the board. I thank you all for your support. And I'm very pleased to be before your committee again in this very short period of time as the chair of the ACRB. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairwoman Hurst.
Okay.
Just one second, Mr. Reed, sorry. Councilmember Bond?
I just want to say it's always great to see Mrs. Hurst and wondered if she could keep us accountable by bringing us some cookies, muffins, some of these meetings.
I am an accountability person. I do hold everybody accountable, but I hold myself also accountable to you. So everyone that knows me knows that accountability is my strength. And I think, Councilwoman Bond, I've held you accountable several times. Was there any questions of me?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
So moving right along, we had discussed the second quarter complaint data, which covers October through December twenty twenty-two. Complaints received were forty-three, sixteen were assigned to investigations, twenty-three complaints were dismissed. Most of those complaints were dismissed because they involved officers outside of the city of Atlanta. Complaints awaiting sign complaint were eight. Zones one, two, and five received the most complaints in council districts. Seven, nine, and twelve received the majority of the complaints. Eleven complaint investigations were closed. We ended the quarter with thirty-five open complaint investigations. And investigative timeline was one hundred and sixty-one days. The top three allegations were appropriate action required, which includes false arrest failure to act in inadequate investigation or inadequate service. Number two was conduct, which was rude, lack of courtesy, unprofessionalism, aggressive behavior. And three was violation of department SOPs, inaccurate report, inaccurate citation, failure to follow arrest procedures and proper search. Which you will notice is that the excessive force did not, was not one of the top three this quarter. So that was good to note. When we look at the use of force data, particularly the officer-involved shooting notifications, we received three. And those occurred in zones one and five, with two occurring in zone one. And they were involved council districts four and six. And one was undetermined which council district that was in. For the board, they held three board meetings, dismissed two complaints, adjudicated eight complaints. Eighteen allegations were adjudicated. The board sustained thirty-nine percent of the allegations. And we had ten complaints awaiting board hearing at the end of the quarter. And for the quarter, the ACRB, the APD responses that we received on ACRB sustained allegations was twenty-five percent. But when we look at the APD's run-in average from twenty twenty as it relates to ACRB sustained allegations, it's fifty-eight percent. I want to talk about community outreach and engagement. Community outreach engagement is the lifeblood of the agency. I mean, that's how we connect with the community, understand what the community's concerns are, build awareness of the agency, and also provide our community education. During the quarter, we participated or initiated one hundred and five events and actions. Forty-five of those events were direct contact, sixty cold calls. I want to mention about cold calls for a second, because that's how we constantly try to build awareness with community members and organizations so that we have opportunities to go out and share our message with those who may not know about us. So we're constantly calling and asking, hey, explaining who we are. We'd like to come out and visit or share our information with you. Someone, I can't remember right now. Someone mentioned Clippers and Cops earlier. That's one of the events that we participate in regularly as well. There's a list of items on here that we did during the quarter. And you could definitely look at those lists. We're always looking for more places to go. And so with the spring and summertime coming, we'd love to be and love to visit at least one time each council member's district. So if you have something going on in your district, please contact my office so that we can attend the event and share the information with your constituents. Our mobile outreach program is that opportunity for us to be able to take our message to the community in their places. We logged over five thousand miles in twenty twenty-two. This is a, this is a great time to be able to have that communication as we're out and going through communities and speaking with people, even when there's not an event. This is like that just everyday type of thing. Okay, so at this point in the presentation, I want to talk about the state of officer accountability in the city of Atlanta. I want to start with where we were in our early years. It was a period of stagnation. And you can see from the, on the left side of the screen that most of the items there have been struck through. We've addressed most of those items, actually, the majority of those items in some form or fashion, and they've continued on to our next phase, which is the current phase that we're in progress. Oh, I will mention, back in the stagnation period, we were at, APD's rate of agreement was at twenty-six percent, hovered around that percentage. When you look at the progress period, where we are now, you'll see that we're hovering around fifty-two percent on the rate of agreement. We increased training, established outreach that I was talking about earlier, improvement of APD's agreement with ACRB sustained complaints, stronger working relationships with APD, and increased cooperation. ACRB growth, increased authority, including more volunteers to help us get our message out, national recognition for the agency, and the continuous diversifying of the board. Now, one thing about this progress, I can't, we as board and staff didn't do this all by ourselves. It was a collective effort of everyone. It was the citizens voicing their demands and wanting some change as it relates to officer accountability. It's the elected officials responding to those demands and pushing for changes in officer accountability. And the elected officials' investment in the ACRB that has allowed us to reach this point of progress. There's also the APD and the ACD working with us to ensure that our work is being handled appropriately. And that's allowed us to move things forward, as you see with that fifty-two percent rate of agreement. And it's from the board and staff and their unwavering commitment to come in every day to try to move the needle on officer accountability. The last phase that you see there is the realization. Now, we want to be at seventy-five percent of rate of agreement. That says that the department, the ACRB, the city, takes officer accountability seriously. It sends a message to the officers, sends messages to the community that citizen concerns will be addressed and opportunities will be provided for correction, discipline, or freedom if it becomes necessary. In the realization stage, which you see, this is where we're trying to go. Increased public confidence in law enforcement, positive perceptions of law enforcement, law enforcement professionalism, lower settlement and litigation costs associated with officer misconduct, empowerment, empowered communities to bring their concerns and have their expectations of accountability recognized. As I mentioned earlier, running average to seventy-five percent rate of agreement and the public being more informed on police interactions. So at the bottom of this slide, there you see a gauge there. We're between half and three-quarters of a way. Our ultimate goal is getting to the F being full or one hundred percent. And but that gauge tells us is that we're making progress, there's still more work to be done. So when you look at this slide, we talk about the work that we do for the ACRB in moving things forward. We have two approaches. One is reactive and the other is proactive. Reactive is the investigations. Because we're, because we're dealing with humans, there will always be a need for independent investigations related to some type of action. Also under reactive is the expansion of the mediation program. We want to be able to provide these opportunities for citizens and officers to come together and gain some mutual understanding, share perspectives, and see if they can resolve the complaint. And if they can't not resolve it, it goes through an investigation. So we can't get to where we want to get to through reactive measures alone. We have to actually do proactive things, because reactive means something has already happened. Somebody's been harmed. The proactive is, how can we address things before we get to the point of someone being harmed? And so And so one of the ways of doing that is establishing an annual community survey program that will allow us to be able to measure, to establish a baseline so that we can measure citizens' perceptions of officer accountability and make adjustments as needed. External studies of BWC footage and usage, expand our community education, police, on police interactions, expand the mediation programs, solidify our role in recruit selection and after-action reports on suspended and terminated officers, and continue to engage in community engagement. So while we talked about where we are and where we're trying to go, we have to look at the challenges. Challenges that we have are a number of officer-involved shootings that will need to be investigated as the criminal investigations wrap up. I mentioned earlier about the mediation program, so grow in the mediation program, reorg, realignment of ACRB staff to be able to do things more efficiently so we can more quickly reach our goal. Additional staff to increase efficiency and meet the mandate quicker. We need to fill board vacancies faster. We have a, we have a vacancy now that's been, we have a board seat that's been vacant now for two years that we need to fill quickly so that we can continue to have our diversity on the board and have people's concerns addressed. We also need to increase, other challenges, increasing citizens' awareness and understanding of the agency. Although we've been doing community outreach for all this time, community engagement, we still have people who are not aware of us or who do not understand the work that we do. I mentioned earlier about the challenge of establishing the baselines and increasing the running percentage of APD's rate of agreement. So after talking about the challenges, talking about where we want to go and where we are, we're bringing, we're coming to our action items. These are the things that's going to allow us to be able to get to where we're going. Some of these items have budget implications. So the need for a new investigator for the nearly twenty officer-involved shooting investigations that will be coming soon, that's something that we need to address, hopefully in the FY twenty-four budget. Reorg and realignment that I mentioned earlier, conducting the annual community surveys for at least five years so that we can see where we're going and see the changes, changes that need to be, that need to happen. And also looking at additional stuff, staff to be able to meet our mandate quicker and deal with and approach our proactive programs faster. Now, we have some non-budget implications that will help us get to where we're going. And that's completing the development of the ACRB's participation and recruit selection process, complete the development of ACRB's after-action reports on officers who receive suspensions and terminations, fill the second eighteen- to thirty-year-old board seat that requires a charter change, and continue to work with law enforcement departments to grow the mediation, with the law department, to grow the mediation program. In closing, I just want to say that the, in Atlanta, we're in a good spot as it comes to officer accountability. We have all the right pieces in the places. We just have to continue to work hard, continue to make investments, continue to hold each other accountable so that we can realize the mission of the ACRB. It's going, it's going to take time, but we have to keep working at it every day. With that, I want to say thank you to you all and the board and staff and the administration for continuing to support us as we move forward, and I will take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Executive Director Reed. First up is Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, Executive Director Reed, and thank you to the members of the, of the ACRB who came today. I truly appreciate y'all, especially the folks from District Twelve that came down. My, my, my questions are around page, page seven. You mentioned, on page seven, it says that the one, two, and five, the zones, APD zones, received the most complaints. But then the very next line, it says council districts seven, nine, and twelve received majority of complaints. Zones one, two, and five are not twelve, not twelve. Zone, I mean, District Twelve sits entirely in Zone Three. And so I'm wondering, how is that? Or how do I, how does that correlate? Because the three zones that you put in are not part of my district.
Thank you for pointing that out. Obviously a typo, and I will address that.
I appreciate you. Thank you. I was, I was a little confused on that one. I think the next one is, the best time for you to come up is right after the police. That way, when they stick out their chest about some of the stuff we're doing, because I, I definitely believe we have the best police department in the country because of the demographics of it, and because we, we got people who ain't scared, scared of people on that force, and they treat us the right kind of way. But now if I see moving the needle, it talks about how from two thousand nine to two thousand fourteen, you had one stage, then the second stage, fifteen to twenty-four, then this last stage. So it shows that when the police come up, they didn't just get there on their own, like this was a collaborative project. So I'm looking forward to seeing the next presentation because that, that's going to be the third branch of folks that's actually doing this together. So I'm, I appreciate you for pushing the police. I can't wait till you get it from seventy-five, and, and I can't wait till you change your goal from being, trying to be in the seventy-five range to being in the ninety range.
In the ninety, yes.
So I, I, I look forward to seeing that part. God willing, I'll still be an elected official around that time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other colleagues, questions, comments for Executive Director Reed?
Thank you, thank you so much, Director Reed, for your all's good work. Thank you all so much. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Executive Director Reed.
Thank you.
Our third and final presentation is quarterly report of police alternative diversion. Mokeemias, Executive Director.
Good afternoon, members of the committee. Mokeemias, Executive Director here for PAD. I actually will not be presenting our quarterly briefing. I wanted to introduce my colleague, China Quarker, who is the Director of Community Response for Policing Alternatives and Diversion. But I'm here, available for questions as needed, and I'll pass over the reins.
Thank you, guys. Okay, so I'll go ahead and jump in. So as you all know, PAD seeks to...
Go ahead, and I know she introduced you, but just go ahead and introduce yourself and your title at PAD, please.
Yes, so my name is China Quarker. I'm the Director of Community Response Services with PAD, which means that I oversee our response teams who actually go out to the calls, our referral coordination team who receives the calls, as well as our housing strategy within the Policing Alternatives and Diversion Initiative. So I just want to briefly go over our annual report and the progress that we were able to make last year. As you all know, we are seeking to reduce the arrest and incarceration of folks who are experiencing quality-of-life concerns that are related to mental health, substance use, or extreme poverty. And we do that with our community first response through ATL three-one-one, as well as divert, direct services and navigation support to folks who are diverted from law enforcement or with open eligible cases when we respond via ATL three-one-one, as well as our ongoing community engagement and education strategy to not only expand residents' utilization of this alternative approach, but also kind of equip them with the tools necessary to be able to support people in their communities. So in 2022, we had three hundred and fifty-nine pre-arrest and post-booking diversions, which also included re-referrals. We were able to respond to one thousand three hundred and twenty-one community referrals through ATL three-one-one. We currently have five hundred and eighty-two individuals enrolled in our Care Navigation Services, as well as being able to engage over sixteen hundred businesses inside of the city of Atlanta through in-person outreach via our community engagement strategy. To talk a little bit about our pre-arrest diversions, we had three hundred and thirty-one APD diversions, which in comparison to two thousand twenty-one is about a sixty-five diversion increase, which we are really excited about. Our top diverted charges were for criminal trespass, panhandling, and shoplifting. We're also seeing some public intoxication, disorderly conduct, as well as possession of drug-related articles as some of our top divertable charges. Overwhelmingly, Zone Five has led our pre-arrest diversions by zone with one hundred and seventy-eight in the year twenty-twenty-two. We're hopeful that these numbers will raise in all of the other zones where we see arrests sort of decreasing and pre-arrest diversion increasing. Most importantly, as we start to gear up toward the opening of the diversion center, where we are hoping that, you know, we can kind of keep the momentum going with pre-arrest In thinking about the Center for Diversion and Services, in 2022, PAD participated in a number of activities and had a number of events at our office to just continue to support the efforts in really expanding and building up the diversion center. So we were able to serve it, of course, as a contracting agency for the architecture and design, which was really, really supported by the Microsoft Justice Reform Initiative. We, of course, participate in the Justice Policy Board to develop the protocol recommendations. We were able to co-host three community design sessions, which were incredible. We had them in our office. And what was so important to me in those moments where we were able to engage and get the insight of folks who are most vulnerable and have had lots of contact with the criminal legal system, to get their opinions on what the center should look like, so that we are, you know, hearing firsthand about how to make it a center where people feel welcomed. Additionally, we conducted a public survey on the programming needs at the center, and we look forward to working with Partners for Home and some of our other partners to, to really etch out what the program needs will look like. Speaking a little about our community response services, in 2022, we were, as I mentioned, able to respond to over thirteen hundred calls. This number excludes any duplicates or ineligible calls. Our top need that we were seeing when we were going out and engaging in the community were just basic needs, people needing shelter, people needing food, clothing, also a lot of mental health concerns, public indecency, as well as disturbances that may have been caused in the community. One thousand of those calls were designated as an immediate response, which, as you can see, our average response time was twenty-one minutes, which we are extremely proud of. We're targeting to be under thirty minutes, and this is the second year in a row that we've been able to keep that up. In 2022, we also started a call deflection pilot with nine-one-one, in which we have worked with them to transfer public indecency calls from nine-one-one directly to three-one-one for alternative response. This has been an incredible opportunity, not only to provide another alternative to public indecency calls, which are most often someone bathing outside, or maybe urinating or defecating outside, that don't necessarily require police to respond. Instead, we're able to go out, get them the, the tools that they need, get them clothing or food, and connect them to better resources. In twenty twenty-three, when we, or twenty twenty-two, when we started on October seventeenth, since then, we were able to respond to twenty-four public indecency calls. And just like with our regular community response calls, we are engaging community members after each and every call to just let them know what happened, be able to offer some support should they see another situation like that in their neighborhood. We are hopeful that in 2023, we'll be able to add additional call codes, just again to free up our nine-one-one operators to be able to divert calls over to us, and also free up law enforcement so that they're able to respond to more emergent calls. In 2022, we enrolled three hundred and eighty-two new individuals into our Care Navigation Program. And just to talk to you a little bit about what that actually looks like. So of course, we begin with engagement, and then we work to identify their, their basic needs. So every person is different. For some, those basic needs look like, again, access to shelter or housing, access to food and clothing, just to take care of those essentials when they are assigned to Care Navigator. Once we do that, we begin to develop a plan. There is not a one-size-fits-all approach to Care Navigation, and we believe that our services and our support should meet the needs of that person. So we develop a plan with them. Are they interested in long-term permanent supportive housing? Are they interested in getting a job? Are they a veteran and may be able to connect them to some of those resources? So we really meet with that person, develop the plan, and then focus on the documentation necessary. In the city of Atlanta specifically, when folks are trying to get permanent supportive housing, there are a number of documents, including ID, birth certificate, social security card, that folks need in order to apply and get approved. So we work with them to get their necessary documentation, apply for government benefits if they qualify, and then we move on to sort of that income portion. Does that person need a job? Does that person qualify for SSI or SSDI or veterans' benefits? So our Care Navigators work with them to sort of get their income together, so that way when they move on to the next step, which is our permanent supportive housing, if, if that is something that they're interested in, they can have all of that taken care of. They will have a way to pay their bills, they will have a way to maintain their housing and sort of maintain their independence. What we know also is that once folks are housed, that does not mean that they may not need additional support. So we believe in ongoing support, even after they're permanently housed and have met some of their goals. That way, you know, if weeks go by or months go by and they find themselves needing some support, we are still there for them. So I just want to give a, a little analysis of how it sort of works when folks are engaged in our Care Navigation Program. So in 2022, we also launched our Street Wellness Enhancement and Engagement Team, which we call the SWEET Team. They are a street-based intensive case management program in which we have a two-person team. One is a clinical advocate, and one is a peer advocate with lived experience. And what they're able to do is provide that intensive case management to folks who are experiencing severe and persistent mental illness, and may have barriers that prevent them from being able to go into traditional shelters. So our SWEET Team works with them hand in hand to sort of develop their plan, get their necessary documentation. And also something that I wanted to note here is that we're able to provide them with bridge housing, which means, you know, due to their SPMI or due to any of the barriers that they may have that prevents them from being able to go into traditional shelter, traditional housing, we're able to get them into bridge housing, let them have some stability while we sort of navigate their permanent plan. In 2022, we had forty-five participants who we were able to provide bridge housing to, as well as twelve people who actually got their apartment, which we are really, really excited about. Here is one person that got their apartment. This is one of our participants who was referred to us post-booking by the Fulton County Public Defender's Office in April twenty-twenty-two. We worked long, long days with this participant to get them all of the things that they needed that they had lost through previous incarcerations, or there's mental health concerns or substance use concerns. They just were able to move into their own apartment after just going through hoops and bounds to sort of make that happen for them. And they're also now fully employed and really working toward getting their life where they want it to be. So we were really excited about this participant, and one of many who, who are able to get their apartments through PAD, through the Georgia Housing Voucher with PAD. Just to talk about some national recognition that we had in 2022 that we were really excited about, the first is PAD was selected by the Just Trust as one of eight national organizations to join their community accelerator. My colleague and I are actually able to travel pretty soon to meet with other communities who are doing similar work and learn from them to better... who are doing similar work and learn from them to better our community engagement, better our community response, and our pre- arrest diversions. Additionally, we were selected as one of five national organizations for the NFL's Inspire Change Initiative. We got a visit, which I think is on one of those slides, from their team, as well as TKO Spikes. I actually got to go on the NFL and talk about PAD, which is great. It was right before playoffs, so it was nice to be able to sort of bridge the gap between some of these national organizations with what the amazing work that we are doing here in Atlanta. This is a, a picture of that meeting where TKO Spikes actually came to PAD. He got to, you know, tour our facility and be able to meet with our team about how we can work together with the NFL and with the Players Coalition to better support our initiative. Locally, we got the Martin Luther King Jr. Community Service Award, presented by Emory, which is an amazing honor. And just to talk a little bit about some of our goals for 2023, we really want to focus on training our most active officers with our law enforcement training. That means, we really want to engage as many officers as we can, either via roll call visits, via academy of trainings, but really getting the word out about pre- arrest diversion, so that officers know that it's a tool in their toolbox and we are able to come out and divert arrests. Additionally, as I mentioned earlier, we will continue to work with partners for the Center for Diversion and Services in two ways. The first is through our joint communications and community engagement, as well as collaborating with Fulton County to train other law enforcement agencies through a grant that we are actually applying for. So, we'll be able to kind of target those jurisdictions that are doing the most arrests and be able to engage their officer-led trainings, so that way, they'll know how to use the Center for Diversion and Services. Additionally, we're going to work with the Justice Policy Board to establish protocols and programming, again, so that that center is equipped with all the things they need to support our community. Lastly, we want to go extremely hard with our community engagement. One of the biggest bullets that I want to raise is the neighborhood canvassing. As you saw last year, we were able to engage over 1,600 businesses. And so, our goal now is to engage homes and engage community members, to let them know about our services, so that they're able to call ATL 311 if they're seeing a situation of concern in their neighborhood. Additionally, we plan to continue to regularly attend our NPU Neighborhood and Business Meetings, as well as our community leadership team, which is comprised of community members who are looking to sort of support PAD and our work, and also hold us accountable to be able to do more in our neighborhoods and sort of be our liaisons to, to different portions of the community. Thank you. I'll definitely take any questions if you have them.
Colleagues, if you have any questions, please indicate speaker button. I do have one, I guess, request. So, I know how you all have broken down the APD-initiated complaints by zone. I would just like to also see the community referrals by zone.
Sure.
See how that matches up with officer-initiated complaints, if you could get that data. And I'll go to Councilmember Lewis.
Sticking with the same thing he said, is there any kind of way we could, is there any suggestions you would make? Because I know last year, I said the same thing. I think, I don't know if you have the paperwork from last year. Zone 3, I think, was amongst the, the least amount in the city. Right now, it looks like it either climbed to number 2, or it failed to number 2 from number 1, from number 3. Is there any kind of way we can look at that update? I want to know if we're either improving in that metric, or if we're getting worse. And I think improving means that our police are seeing folks who should be committed to PAD, and they're giving a phone call to you, similar to how they are in Zone 5.
Yeah, I can definitely give you the numbers so that you compare from last year, but I think that's what's speaking to our need for law enforcement engagement, just to have boots on the ground, get into those roll calls, go into those precincts, remind them of PAD and this resource, as well as boosting up our ATL 311 referral opportunities. So, knocking on doors, talking to community members so that they know that PAD exists and that we are a resource to them.
I, I like when, I know I said a little earlier, when the ACRB comes up after the police, of police, and is there any kind of way you all could work with, or if you are working with the Atlanta Citizen Review Board, to actually improve that? Because I see from their, from their timeline, it looks like everything that they work with the police on, and they really work with them on it, it actually improves. To me, and I ran talking about PAD, and I know we invested more money last year than we ever have in the history of our city in PAD, I just want to see us using it more. And so, I would like to know if we could, if you all are working with the Atlanta Citizen Review Board, or if there's an opportunity to work with them, because it seems that if the initiatives that they take forth actually are happening in the police department.
Yeah, I definitely think there is a, an opportunity for collaboration, and we'll add that to our list for this year.
And I would implore you to use it with the understanding that the police found, that the Atlanta Police Department really does work with the Atlanta Citizen Review Board, that they do take into what, take into account what they said and prioritize it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much for your presentation. I just have a, a few issues, some for you and then some for the Law Department or the administration. I guess my first question, going into your presentation, you talked about the shoplifting. And as I've talked to small merchants, the further away you get from downtown, it's the shoplifting that is, you know, breaking them, you know, because it's so repetitive, and it's usually the same people over and over again. So, if you could quickly walk us through, what happens when you come to a shoplifting intervention? And, you know, to say we're trying to divert them, but how are people made whole? How was the merchant made whole? You know, what, what happens when that takes place?
Yeah, so I want to, I want to say two things before I answer. The first is that we have to be called out to respond, so we are not necessarily responding to every single shoplifting call, but just the ones where law enforcement have called and requested diversion. So, when we go out, we are engaging everyone the same. We're initially getting their consent for services, and then identifying what support they need, and then they go through that Care Navigation chart that I showed you before. So, does that answer your question?
Well, I guess if, if, if they're caught shoplifting, I mean, do they return the item? I mean, what, what happens? I mean, if there's no chart?
So, the merchants or the business owner has to consent to us actually doing the pre- arrest diversion before. So, at that time, that merchant has decided that whatever Snickers bar or whatever was stolen is, they'll be okay with that, and they're allowing us to do a pre- arrest diversion. So, I'm not quite sure what the merchant decides to do about any property, but I'm sure that that conversation is had with law enforcement and the merchant before we're even called out, because there has to be an agreement for pre- arrest diversion.
Yeah, well, that was important, though. That's why I was trying to get an agreement with the merchant, because most of the merchants that I've talked with, ever since a previous chief announced that APD wasn't going to pursue shoplifting, I mean, they, you know, people are just kind of coming into their stores and taking what they want. And so, okay, so secondly, obviously, there are people who are repeat offenders. How do you all deal with those, or have you had the experience of dealing with those who are chronic in probably some of these law infractions? Have you come across these individuals, and how do you handle them? How do you provide services to them?
So, we have a number of participants who have previous histories of, you know, having multiple arrests or multiple incarcerations, and that doesn't necessarily mean that they get like special, we don't treat them any differently. They get the same amount of support, because what we recognize is that the, the support piece is, was missing, in that like, they are reoffending because they may not have access to an income, access to housing, access to some of the quality of life concerns that I just mentioned. So, our goal is to just support them. And also, we provide legal navigation. So, what that means is now they have someone to go with them to court, to make sure that they're going to their court dates, to make sure that some of the, the minor offenses that we're seeing people go back and forth to jail for, which are not showing up to probation, not going to their court dates, are happening, because now they have that Care Navigator who's able to support them, go with them, sort of keep a schedule for them, make sure they're able to get access to their medication, or any of the barriers that are preventing them from being able to, to live more independently.
I guess my, my question was a little more specific.
Sure.
Have, have you all found that you may be providing services to some of the same individuals for some of the same infractions?
I would say mostly, I'm, I'm not quite sure, because I think like, we have people who, when you say reoffender, it's them going back and forth to jail. So, are there people in our program who have been back and forth to jail before? Yes.
No, that's, that's not what I'm asking.
Okay.
What I'm asking is that have, have you all had the experience that you've been called for an intervention, and it's an individual that you have previously provided service to?
Yes, yes. So, that what we would call is a rediversion. So, yes, we have gone back out, if we've engaged someone before to, to do a rediversion and get them reconnected to services. And the clinician might come out a little bit in this, but what we understand is that change happens in cycles. And so, what we don't expect our participants to do is, at the snap of a finger, just meet all of their goals and, you know, never have any type of engagement with any law enforcement body ever again. For some of our participants, that's the reality. For others, it may not be, specifically for folks who have had lots of involvement in the criminal legal system, who, you know, we are catching them maybe 10, 15 incarcerations later, there may be some, some things that we need to work through with them. So, if we do get a call where we are re-engaging someone who we've rediverted before, or we've diverted before, we will just continue working with them and continue getting them connected to CARE.
And you provide us some statistics in that specific category.
Sure, yeah.
At, at the next presentation. I think that that would be helpful. I know in a previous presentation last year, I asked a question about how much follow-up is done after the initial meeting, and didn't seem to be too much. So, I mean, if we're going to crack the nut of keeping people out of the way of being incarcerated, there has to be some measurable follow-up for those individuals who are, particularly those who are chronic, right? So, let me ask you this other question. How many years has it been the city of Atlanta's been supporting PAD? Because I've voted for it every time. Is it eight years?
It's going, it's going on eight years, but 2021 was when we started the community response portion.
And I, I say this every year, when are you all going to start working beyond 7:00 PM? Because in my experience in law enforcement, I'm sure it's probably still the same, the evening watch, 3 to 11, is probably the busiest shift for most of the chaos that, or devilment, as my grandmother might say, that happens in the city. And so, if you all are ending at 7:00 PM, that leaves, well, not only the, the additional hours on the evening watch, where the city is still active and there's still many, many issues happening, but even the morning watch, 11 to 7, where individuals may, may be out on the street, they may be more desperate, they may commit more acts that violate the law, that might be in greater need of intervention. And when, when is that going to happen?
Yeah, well, luckily, next year, the Center for Diversion and Services will open, which is a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week opportunity for law enforcement to divert. So, hopefully, that will be able to, to support, you know, the evening watch and the morning watch in their diversion efforts.
So, you all don't have any plans to expand beyond 7:00 PM? Is that what I'm hearing? I want to be correct.
I'll defer to our executive director on the timeline for when, but as of right now, our goal is to really support training our officers and getting them prepared for the Center for Diversion and Services.
Yeah, because if you follow that logic, if the center is open 24 hours, then following that logic, we don't need to pay PAD anymore, because the center will be there 24 hours a day. So, I want to make sure we get the right answer.
Yeah.
I don't want you all to talk yourselves out of business.
Yeah, thank you for that question, Councilmember Bond, and thank you, China. So, to China's point, you know, we've been a core partner in the planning efforts for the diversion center for the last four years, because we recognize that same need, right? That we need a location that is open and available 24 hours a day when law enforcement is engaging with individuals. And in fact, it's much more appropriate if there is a facility that is available for somebody to come into than for a mobile response team to be doing response, say, at 2:00 AM, right? So, just recognizing what services are actually available in the city past the evening hours. That is why it has been so important to us to work closely with the county and the city of Atlanta, as well as our partners, and Partners for Home and Grady and others, to actually establish this 24/7 facility. So, China's absolutely right. We will be a core partner in that work, as we have been. What we are looking at doing in partnership with Grady and other providers is just making sure that we are doing, we are staying in our lane. So, while we will not be providing as many mobile responses to officers if they are bringing them here, to, or excuse me, down the, down the block to the center, we will, we are seeking to continue offering Care Navigation support to those individuals who would be appropriate for our services. So, those folks that are struggling with substance use, use, excuse me, mental health or extreme poverty, and where our teams can actually provide that ongoing, long-term support to help address those concerns, that's where we'll continue to, to, to work with all of the partners involved. You know, just to add, and, you know, we've had this conversation before, I recognize, but our ability to provide community-first response through 311 is something that is still fairly new. We are only in our, are going into basically our third year of operations, and we are aligned with 311. So, the timeline for our ability to provide community-first response, which does not involve police officers, it really needs to be in alignment with what the Department of Customer Service with ATL 311 decides in terms of expanding their hours. So, we do not run our own call center. That is intentionally tied to a public call center through 311. We are simply the responding agents that, that are dispatched out by 311. So, we're going to stay in alignment, of course, with how 311 decides to expand, and really looking forward to, you know, as that continues to evolve, also recognizing 311 is still fairly new in the city of Atlanta, but really looking forward to continuing that partnership, which has been so successful so far.
I have the same issue with 311, because the, the city does not sleep. And if there are customer service issues, if pipes burst, if lights are out, et cetera, et cetera, then 311 needs to be operating in a way that accommodates unexpected. And so, let me ask another question for clarity about the center and PAD's role in it. So, are you all going to have personnel at this center 24 hours a day?
So, I, so the Grady Hospital, I know y'all are aware, Grady Hospital is actually going to be the operating agency that is operating the 24-hour facility, and will be staffing those folks that are 24/7 at the facility. It'll be run by peers, which is a best practice. We will be working closely to cross-train and to support, and our Care Navigation staff will be staffing individuals who actually get diverted into the center. That will likely look like having staff on-site, but because of the constraints of the building, our office is literally right across the street. So, likely, most of our Care Navigation staff will remain in our current offices and be available to folks who are diverted through the center, either at the center or when folks are connected, for them to be able to come back and seek services at our office.
Well, I'm looking forward to the day that that is clarified, because if PAD is supposed to respond on-site to prevent a person from being arrested, if the police are transporting a person to the center, or to the jail, or to the hospital, legally, that person is under arrest, because they're under the care, custody, and control of that officer. And so, if you all are not going to be going on-site to help to divert these individuals, then that's a trip, that still takes a police officer off of patrol to have to maintain the care, custody, and patrol until this person is handed off. So, in your conversations, as you go forward to working out how that's going to work, I hope that you will put a pin in this point and can, will get, help to get some clarity on how that transfer of services or handoff of case management will work, you know, not only in the administrative sense, but actually in in the administrative sense, but actually in the physical sense.
Sure, yeah, and I would-
Question of that person.
Sure, I would defer probably to Ms. Robinson or someone else in the Law Department related to the legal concerns there. I will say that, you know, this is something that we discussed at length, as we established our protocols. And in fact, officers are able to transport to the PAD offices now. So we provide mobile response, or we provide the option for officers to transport. So that is in our current, that is in the SOP currently. We haven't had any concerns or issues with it, as far as I'm aware. And this is a common best practice across the country at this point, that we have both mobile response to officers, but actually, more typically, you have the ability for officers to go ahead and transport somebody to diversion, which is what we saw in Tucson, we've seen it in Houston, we've seen it in many places around the country. And it seems to, it seems to be actually very helpful for officers to have that quick drop-off. So they're not waiting for us on, you know, whatever corner they're on, they're actually able to just go ahead and transport that individual, and, you know, they're in and out the door in a target time of five minutes.
All right, well, that's a good segue to Ms. Robinson for my next set of questions. We've been funding PAD for eight years without an RFP. How long legally can the city continue to do that?
Can I just clarify on the time? Just to be clear, we launched in 2017. So we've been getting funding from the city, I believe, since, there was an initial funding, perhaps in 2016, but just to clarify. Thank you.
Well, yeah, we had presentations on PAD earlier than that. That's what I recall.
There was a design period, but funding, we launched in 2017. We've been operating since 2017.
Right, but they were, we voted and we paid, we funded, we funded the research prior to that.
I don't believe before 2016, but I'll defer to you.
I've got some gray hair, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought it was longer than that. But regardless, my question remains the same. Even if it's 2016, how long can we just continue to fund year in and year out without going, having an RFP for this type of service?
Good afternoon, Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta, Department of Law. So there are kind of two different, just for clarification, sets of funding that have been provided to PAD by the city. And I think it's somewhat important to frame the conversation with those two pieces of information. Initially, I believe, well, three, you're correct, well before 2016, the city began research into the potential for some law enforcement diversion program. So that was done, but that was not providing funding to PAD, because PAD didn't exist at that time. After PAD was established, which I think is right, it was 2016, there was fun, the city of Atlanta entered into a multi-jurisdictional MOU with our partners at Fulton County, as well the court system, the sheriff's office, and so forth. And so in that kind of era, in the 2016, 2017 through 2020, there was a series of donations to the 501(c)(3) that was, that isn't, that is PAD, by the city, through its budget, to PAD. Thereafter, beginning in 2020, pursuant to an ordinance 20-0-1738, the city of Atlanta waived the procurement, entered into an agreement with PAD officially for PAD to provide the city with pre-arrest diversion and community referral program services. And in order to execute that agreement, the council authorized the waiver of the procurement code. That is the current agreement that we are under. It has been renewed a few times since then, and we're currently in the second renewal option, with the term commencing on July 1, 2022, and ending on June 30 of this year. So in order to enter into that agreement, the council waived the application of the procurement code. There isn't anything in the code or the charter which limits the ability of the council to continue to do so in order to enter into new or subsequent agreements of this sort without going through the procurement process or sending it out for an RFP. That's a policy decision, but if it remains the desire of the council to move forward while, with such agreements through the waiver of the procurement code, then the council may do so. If it is not the desire of the council to do so, then in order for the city to maintain receipt of such services, there would be a need to utilize the procurement code to acquire such professional services.
Thank you for that. So there's two options, whether to continue to waive, or we can go out for an RFP to see what the universe is like. And so, but anticipating that would probably, the latter would probably happen, is that we can't set, obviously, parameters for the type of services we'd like to receive from PAD, even expanding what they, what we might require of them, correct?
Yes, I mean, yes, it's an agreement. There is a contract right now, regardless of how the source was selected. And the contract, under the contracting principles, the city would set forth what it wants in its scope of work, and the vendor, in this case PAD, would determine whether or not they're able to provide those services. And an agreement would, you know, be entered if the two sides can meet on that for how to move forward. So the city, of course, has the ability to shape that scope of work.
Thank you for that, and thank you for answering my question. And I'll just close with this, and speak to the members of the committee and those members of the council who might hear this. At some point, you know, there is still human crisis that takes place after 7:00 PM. So if it is, I think that the council and the administrations should move towards either having a 24-hour number for PAD, or expanding 3-1-1 to accommodate PAD, so that those individuals who may go into crisis at 7:01, or at 3:00 AM, or at 5:00 AM, have the same opportunity to receive the benefit of the services that are provided in the open, operating hours that everyone else has access to. Because in my experience, when I worked in law enforcement in the corrections department, I worked 11 to 7:00. And there was a whole lot of hell that went on in Atlanta from 11 to 7:00 every night. And people were in need of intervention, they were in need of help, and they wound up in the, in the city's bosom, over there at 236 Peachtree Street, which is now the Gateway Center. And so there's still a real need for that type of intervention for our citizens, and I hope that we will work to make this 24 hours to accommodate. And so with that, Mr. Chair, I will withdraw.
Councilmember Bond, Councilmember Lewis?
And similar to some of the stuff that Councilmember Bond was saying about the expanding of hours, PAD, I think that's a budget issue, though. I think that's, I know you all are doing everything you can to raise as much fund, much funds as you can, and you're raising it the right way, it seems like. Seems like I've even seen you turn down funding from organizations that want to do certain things. So being strong is going to have y'all working a little bit harder, which I understand, but I think that when the budget comes up, you hear me talk about expanding PAD 24 hours, understanding that we need to match it with 3-1-1, have the same exact issues. You hear me talking about it, you hear me voting that way, and asking the mayor to increase the budget in that manner. I hope that my, I hope that we're able to find the support on council to actually expand it to 24 hours, because I've seen it in action. I've seen myself and the mayor go to homeless encampments in my district that were newly formed. I've seen PAD come out. I saw a homeless encampment that started within three months of myself and Mayor Dickens actually getting elected. I saw the mayor come and walk to that homeless encampment with me. I saw us talk to a person who was there. I saw her and the other folks move the stuff up to a point to where the city of Atlanta could actually come pick it up. I saw that happen. I saw PAD service the folks, service the, service people who were actually there. So I've seen it work. I've seen it in action. I can't wait to see the next step. I think it's a funding issue. I think that's more of us, more on us, the city of Atlanta, actually coming to the table to actually do this public-private partnership, similar to how we deal with Georgia Power, making sure that we're able to light up our city. We didn't spare a dollar to make sure we did it the right way. We've seen crime go down by it. I think for the past 30 years in Atlanta, we said, if you cut on the lights on Cleveland Avenue, Jumbo Road, and Metropolitan, crime will go down. That's one of the things I think that's actually decreasing crime, because it looks like night, it looks like daylight in the daytime. So I can't wait to see us stand on our word and stand with you, and actually improve your budget, so we can see you work 24 hours. I also want to see us use you more. When I say, I'll take eight years, Ms. Moki, I know you, I know we just refuted the eight-year fact, but I'll give you eight years, I'll stand with him on eight years. But if we're working with you for eight years, I want to see you grow, right? The growth has to mean that our police officers have to encourage, and we got to find a way to encourage folks to actually use it. Because I've seen you work. I've seen it in action. Thank you again.
All right, thank you-
Thank you.
-for your report. And we would move on to our legislative agenda, but we're lacking a quorum, so Damon or someone, if they can make an announcement, and then Captain Baxter and Deputy Chief P can go, bring them in on warrants to return to the committee. All right, we have returned to a quorum, so we will move on to our legislative items. We'll first handle our consent agenda, claims of favorable and unfavorable recommendations. We do have no favorable claims, so we'll handle unfavorable claims. I'll make a motion to adverse items 1 through 16. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Norwood. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Please vote. The vote is closed.
Five yeas, zero nays. Those items are adverse. Now, on to our regular agenda, ordinance for second reading, 2201109, which was referred back to this committee.
An ordinance by councilmembers Byron D. Amos, Michael Julian Bond, Keisha, Sean Waits, Antonio Lewis, Dustin Hillis, and Mary Norwood, as substituted and amended by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, to amend Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-1, to create a definition of security plan, Chapter 2, Article 2, Division 2, Subdivision 1, and Chapter 10, Article 2, Division 2, Subdivision 3, renewal, revocation, and transfer, Section 10-106, and for other purposes.
And I haven't heard any requests from Councilmember Amos, but the request as to why this came out to committee was for law to further review it. Do you have any updates as of current, Ms. Robinson, or?
Good afternoon. No new updates since the communication that was sent from the Department of Law to the council in anticipation of the full council meeting last week. And so therefore, the Department of Law would respectfully request that this item be held.
Make the motion to hold. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Boone.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Five yeas, zero nays. That item is held in committee. Item 2, 2301123.
An ordinance by Councilmember Howard shook to waive Chapter 2, Article 10, Section 2-1332 of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the Atlanta City Code of Ordnances to authorize the police department to donate 140 Motorola radios to the Atlanta Police Foundation and for other purposes.
A motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Norwood. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
If the vote isn't showing.
We're manually putting it in.
Five yeas, a zero nays. That item is favorable. Item number 3, 2301127. You can go ahead and read this in, but we're going to hold this for addendums to the substitute for next cycle.
An ordinance by councilmembers Matt Westmoreland, Liliana Batiari, Amir Faroki, Howard Shook, Andrea L. Boone, Marcy Collier-Overstreet, Antonio Lewis, and Jason Winston, as substituted by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing the contribution of a total amount not to exceed $1,616,603.00 to the Atlanta Fire Rescue Foundation to support improvements and upgrades in fire stations across Atlanta, authorizing the chief financial officer to transfer funds from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Did you read the substitute in? Because we're not wanting to read the substitute. We're just wanting to read the-
Yes, I did, Mr. Chair. An ordinance by councilmembers Matt Westmoreland, Liliana Batiari, Amir Faroki, Howard Shook, Andrea L. Boone, Marcy Collier-Overstreet, Antonio Lewis, and Jason Winston, authorizing the city of Atlanta to donate a total amount not to exceed blank dollars and blank cents to the Atlanta Fire Rescue Foundation to support improvements and upgrades in fire stations across Atlanta and for other purposes.
Make a motion to hold. Is there a second?
One.
Second by Councilmember Norwood. Councilmember Bond?
I'd like to add my name.
You want to wait until the next?
Well, is that-
Because there's still, there's still a number of people that need to sign up to put their names and amounts in there. So we were just going to hold off until two weeks' time certain?
I mean, we're here and now.
I'm trying to save time, but if you want to make the, make the motion to amend, feel free to do so.
So moved.
Is there a second? All right, fellas, for lack of a second.
There's seconds are required in committee. They're required by the machines, but they're not required by our rules.
You want to speak, Mr. Parliamentarian?
Dennis Conway, Parliamentarian, for the Atlanta City Council. In this setting, seconds are required in committee, as I believe the Law Department has opined.
When did we do legislation to change?
The Georgia Open Meetings Act anticipates that when a body is subject to the Open Meetings Act takes a motion, that seconds are to be recorded in the minutes. Due to that indication, though it is not set forth explicitly, there have been allegations that the city has dealt with, that our motion, our minutes are not-
Complete.
-correct, because they may or may not include a second. Therefore, in accordance with the, the Law Department's recommended moving forward with seconds in committees to avoid any such issues. Of course, it would be the decision of the chair whether or not to require it in committees, but due to the language of the Open Meetings Act, it would be our recommendation that that be the committee's practice moving forward.
But I am correct that our, that our rules don't require. Yeah, I did. Thank you. Thank you.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Five yeas, zero nays, item is amended. I'll make a motion to hold for two weeks' time certain. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lewis. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Five yeas, zero nays, item is held. Onto resolutions, 22R3232.
A resolution by Councilmember Dustin Hillis, authorizing the mayor or his desert need to execute the Seventh Amendment to FC 9974B, citywide contract for demolition and asbestos abatement services with Southern, Southern Demolition and Environmental Incorporated for demolition services at former fire station 28, and to add additional funding in an amount not to exceed $100,000.00 on behalf of the Department of Enterprise Asset Management, all contracted work to be charged to and paid from accounts listed below and for other purposes.
Our colleagues, this is just a funding paper for the old fire station 28 in District 9, which has major foundation issues and is an eyesore to the community, so I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Boone. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Five yeas, zero nays, that item is favorable. Item number 5, 23R3261. Actually, I believe 5 through, what, 10 are claimed, so we can take those together.
Yes, Mr. Chair. 23R3261, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing the settlement of all claims against the defendants in the case of Tyler Griffin versus City of Atlanta, Donald Vickers and Matthew Abad, civil action file number 120CV02514, United States District Court for the Northern District of Georgia, in the amount of $400,000.00, authorizing said amount to be paid to and from account numbers, account numbers listed herein, authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the total settlement amount and for other purposes. 23R3262, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing the settlement of all claims against defendant City of Atlanta in the case of Roberta Sheffield versus City of Atlanta, civil action file number 22EV003931, pending in the State Court of Fulton County, Georgia, in the amount of $50,000.00, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to the account numbers listed herein, authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the settlement amount and for other purposes. 23R3263, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing the settlement of all claims against defendant City of Atlanta in the case of George Garcia versus Stephen McLendon and City of Atlanta Civil Action File Number 22MS176554, pending in the magistrate court of Fulton County, Georgia, in the amount of $5,000.00, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein, authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the settlement amount and for the purposes. 23R3264, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing the settlement of all claims against defendant City of Atlanta in the case of Constance Gibson, individually and on behalf of her minor daughter, Jalen Gibson, versus City of Atlanta, civil action file number 22EV001241, pending in the state court of Fulton County, Georgia, in the amount of $72,000.00, the settlement amount, authorizing the settlement amount to be paid, charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein, authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the settlement amount and for other purposes. 23R3265, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing the settlement of all claims against defendant City of Atlanta in the case of Blake Burkett versus Georgia Department of Transportation and civil, and City of Atlanta Civil Action File Number 20EV003311, pending in the state court of Fulton County, Georgia, in the amount of $200,000.00, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. 23R3266, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing the settlement of all claims against the defendants in the case of Sharif Hassan versus City of Atlanta, civil action file number 121ZV04629, United States District Court for the Northern District of Georgia, in the amount of $105,000.00, authorizing said amount to be paid from the account numbers listed herein, authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the total settlement amount and for other purposes.
Thank you. For those, before I make a motion, I would just ask, Ms. Robinson, if you could, between now and the council meeting, provide me with some more information on 23R3261, 23R3265, and 23R3266. Provided in, in the text. If you could provide, provide me with some more information on those items between now and the council meeting?
Yes, that would be no problem.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve those items. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Lewis. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Five yeas, zero nays, those items are favorable. Item number 11, 23R3267.
A resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee to rescind Resolution Number 22R4750 and authorizing payment in the amount of $568.81 in settlement of the property damage claim of David Perry against the City of Atlanta and for other purposes.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson, so this states that it was inadvertently adopted as adverse, but should have been adopted as favorable, but this doesn't adopt it, it just rescinds the previous resolution. So is that legislation coming back to be adopted at the next meeting, or how does this working? Or says rescinding and authorizing payment, so?
Yes, this, this rescinds the previous denial claim and authorizes payment in the amount of $568.81, which corrects the denial which went through inadvertently at the previous, at a previous council meeting.
Thank you. So it rescinds the previous one and authorizes the payment. Gotcha.
Yes.
All right, motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Norwood. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Four yeas, zero nays, that item is favorable. So I'm looking at, I think that completes our legislative agenda, but looking at item 12, so that's past the year. So is that falling off after this? After this meeting, or because of the, it was a year on February 15th?
It falls off at the next full council meeting.
Okay.
And we do have a walk-in.
Yes, we do have a walk, one walk-in. Go ahead and read that in.
MSID number 32119, a resolution by the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, a resolution to amend Resolution 21R3040 pursuant to which the City of Atlanta Alcohol Technical Advisory Group was established to conduct a review and to identify recommendations for changes to the City of Atlanta's alcohol beverage licensing process in order to extend the time by which ATAG III must complete its review and recommendations such that it shall be by no later than July 1st, 2023, and for other purposes.
So again, this just extends ATAG III for four months. They need a little more time to do their work and come up with the recommendations, so I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Norwood. Please prepare the vote. Uh, Councilmember Bond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the author of the legislation that created ATAG III, I'm dismayed that this has taken a year and a half. The original legislation called for this to take six months of the review of what had already been reviewed by ATAG II. And so the, the need to have these changes made was imminent a year and a half ago, or a year ago. And so now they're extending it again. And I know that Mr. Bond, as the chair came to me the last time they extended, and said, hey, we just need six more months. But I mean, but how much time do you need when we had a very extensive process with ATAG II and the work essentially had already been done? Citizens want relief. They want the changes to come forward and, you know. This just seems like they're not only trying to decide what came first, the chicken or the egg, but they're trying to reinvent the chicken and reinvent the egg. So I won't be supporting this.
Mr. Bond? Motion was already made and seconded, right? Okay. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Two tied, so it's not carried. Is that correct? Was it automatically held?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
It'll be held in committee.
I just want to say that being involved with the other group, CLEAR, that came and presented to the Buckhead Public Safety Test Force, they were really ready to go. Everything got held up in order to have them merge with ATAG III. I think this committee ought to find out why it has taken so long, but I think it's more complex than just saying that they haven't been doing their job. So I do think we ought to get better information before we make assumptions that, that it's taken too long.
Yeah, I would agree. If we could put a request in for someone on that committee to appear at the next public safety meeting so they can tell us what all they've been doing and what all they have remaining to do, and hopefully we can reconsider this. Councilmember Bond?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I, I don't disagree with either yourself or the esteemed Ms. Norwood at all. During the ATAG II process, ATAG II made routine reports to the Public Safety Committee to apprise them, but the legislation that created ATAG III was specific in what they were required to do. They have gone beyond that prescription, just at a minimum. They've gone beyond it. And so having been involved in ATAG II and followed ATAG I, you know, there's always a lot to talk about when you're talking about the alcohol, alcohol code. And so when I drafted the legislation to do ATAG III, that's why I made it as specific as possible so that we wouldn't be in the situation that we're in today. And, you know, I'm not laying blame, you know, it is what it is. It's taken, it will take a year and a half for what was prescribed to be a six-month process. So I'm be glad to find out, you know, why they got lost or strayed or can't seem to get it done. Be glad to hear why.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bond. Councilmember Lewis.
And I just wanted to explain my vote on that a little bit, understanding that ATAG III was pretty much written by Councilmember Bond and the council when they did that, and knowing that ATAG I and ATAG II were very interacting and co-partners with the council, and not seeing the same type of reaction with ATAG III is why I'm standing with our, the person who I think wrote the paper to actually get it right. So I appreciate you for laying that out, Mr. Bond.
All right, colleagues, any other questions or comments?
I move adjourned.
Well, we're gonna have questions and comments first, if anyone. I'll just say that we've completed our first Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee in the Larry M. Dingell Committee Room. He was, of course, lastly, a private practice attorney, but before that, he was a city clerk and a, an Atlanta police officer who was tasked with patrolling Perry Homes of District 9, so just wanted to make mention of that. And I'm thankful that the council has taken action to rename Committee Room 1 after Mr. Dingell. Anyone else? Councilmember Bond?
Just wanted to dito what you said about the great Larry Dingell, was a great Morehouse man and a great mentor to me. But also wanted to mention someone else who was just as impactful on Atlanta before Larry Dingell, the, the great Lo Jelks, the former WSB reporter, first African-American news reporter in Atlanta expired over the weekend. So we want to send condolences to his family. He covered City Hall at length when there weren't very many people who looked like him at City Hall. So wanted to extend our condolences to the Jelks family.
Anyone else? So we will stand adjourned. Thank you.